All right, good morning, everyone. We can go ahead and get started. Welcome to the October 15th, 2021 virtual meeting of the zoning board of appeals. My name is Timmy Knutson. My pronouns are he/him/his, and I'm the chairman of the ZBA. Amidst all of the challenges that we experience in Chicago, we have a lot to be proud of as of late. Last Sunday, Chicago paused for the Chicago Marathon, welcoming thousands of runners back into the city to cover 26 miles of nature, skyscrapers, and culturally rich communities. Tonight, the women of the Chicago Sky play in game three of the WNBA championship here in Chicago at Wind Trust Arena. There's a ton to be excited about in Chicago, but so that we are all out of here by the 8:00 PM game, let's get going with today's meeting. First, I'd like to take judicial notice of the fact that on September 17th, 2021, the governor of the state of Illinois signed a disaster proclamation declaring all counties of the state of Illinois a disaster area due to the COVID-19 public health emergency. This disaster proclamation is in effect until October 17th, 2021. Thus, Section 7E1 of the Open Meetings Act has been met. Second, I am making a determination pursuant to Section 72 of the Open Meetings Act that an in-person meeting of the board is not practical or prudent. Similarly, I am making a determination pursuant to Section 75 of the Open Meetings Act that because of the disaster declared by the governor, it is unfeasible for at least one member of the zoning board of appeals or its chief administrative officer or its chief legal officer to be physically present at the meeting place inasmuch as there is no physical meeting place. Third, this meeting will operate under the emergency rules governing the conduct of remote public board meetings and provisions for remote public participation, promulgated first by my predecessor, now by me, and which are posted to the board's website. In line with these emergency rules, today's meeting of the zoning board of appeals is a virtual meeting that is being simulcast to the general public via live streaming. It is also being recorded. We've established these virtual meetings in keeping with the governor, the general assembly, the mayor, and city council's goal to continue government functions while maintaining transparency and public safety. But there are technical limitations to this format that we must collectively manage, particularly with respect to the presentation of new evidence during a hearing, the ability for applicants and objectors to resolve objections or amend proposals during the hearing, and the participation of large numbers of people. As a result, any material to be presented to the board, whether by the applicants or members of the public, was required to be submitted in advance of the meeting, and in addition, everyone wishing to testify at today's hearing, whether on behalf of an applicant or in opposition, was required to register before today's meeting. For those who do not regularly appear before the board, I will go over a few things for those participating. Number one, we are operating under the emergency rules. So for all applicants, objectors, and their attorneys, if you did not send us your exhibits by the cutoff date and time, you will not be able to reference them. Number two, all participants will be listed as attendees within the Zoom meeting until your matter is called. At that time, we will transfer you to a panelist. There will be a short switch over where you will lose the feed, so don't be surprised about that. Number three, once you are sat as a panelist, please present your case. Board staff will be presenting the PowerPoint exhibits for everyone as we normally do, so you will not need to manage sharing your screen. Number four, please be mindful of background notes, and please mute yourself when you are not speaking at all times, including now. Number five, in addition, please note that we have a court reporter preparing our record, so it is important that two people do not speak at the same time. You might see me muting someone if that happens. Number six, if you are an active participant in this meeting, please do not watch the live stream. This will cause audio interference. Let me repeat that. If you are an active participant in this meeting, please do not watch the live stream in tandem. Number seven, please make sure you identify yourself while you are speaking. This goes for attorneys, applicants, members of the public, and board commissioners. Since all of us are remote, we and our court reporters cannot always see who is talking at any given time. I will also be administering oaths for each witness individually to accommodate for this. Number eight, if an applicant or anyone in opposition to the application has any technical issues presenting their case and is unable to proceed, we will attempt to continue the matter until the end of our call to create time to resolve the issues. If unsuccessful, we will continue the matter until a subsequent meeting. Number nine, after your matter or matters are concluded, please leave the Zoom meeting. If you are interested in continuing to watch, and we hope you do, I encourage you to watch the live stream, which is accessible from our website. Now, I'd like to call this virtual meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order. I will take a roll call to vote to establish quorum. Commissioners, after I call your name and you state that you are present, please verify that you can hear and see me. All right, Commissioner Saul.
Present, I can hear and see you.
Great, hi. Commissioner Sanchez.
Present, I can hear and see you.
Great. Commissioner Esposito.
Present, I can hear and see you.
Commissioner Toya.
Present, I can hear and see you.
Wonderful, and I am present, so quorum is established. The minutes of last month's meeting have been distributed. Unless there are corrections, I move that we approve the minutes as distributed. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, they're approved. I move that we approve today's agenda. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, today's agenda has been approved. All right, now let's go to continuances and withdrawals. Okay, I'm gonna go in order. I know that there is a number coming in between last night and this morning, so the first on my list is anyone here for 411-21-S?
Chairman, this is Victor with the zoning board. That first application for 1121-S that was going to be drawn on behalf of the department, the applicant sent an email saying that there was situations out of his control, and then he had to withdraw his application.
Okay, got it. So, for the record, calendar number 411-21-S is being withdrawn by the department, planning and development, in coordination with the applicant. All right, we're going to calendar number 414-21-Z. Is anyone here for this matter? It would be Helena Sattelmeyer and Chuck Okuji.
Helena, you have to accept that prompt that says, "Do you want to be a panelist?" There you go.
Thank you. And I'm gonna actually have, if Nancy Radzovich or Steve Lanziano is on, I'm gonna have them, there you go, I see Steve speak on 414-21.
Hello?
Hi, who's this?
Keno Kuji and Helena Sattelmeyer. Sorry about that, we had a little technical difficulty on our side.
Oh, no worries, no worries. So Steve Lanziano from the Department of Planning and Development is gonna speak quickly on this one. Steve, are you on?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we got you.
Steve Lanziano, Department of Planning and Development. The denial for this was issued in error for the license. They actually need to go through an administrative adjustment process, so this case should be dismissed here at the board, and it should go through the administrative adjustment process and then to city council.
Okay, so Helena and Chuck, do you have any questions on that dismissal?
No, we understand what's been stated and the direction for which we'll proceed. And we're working to get our construction documents together so we can submit that packet for the administrative adjustment so it can go for the council, and they will see what Helena intends to do in the facility, and I'll be working with her as her architect.
Okay, great, good. Well, hey, thank you for your time, and thanks for coming this morning. And for everyone on the record, that's calendar number 414-21-Z, which is being dismissed on the record. Okay, let's move to calendar number 418-21-S.
Chairman, you said 418?
Yeah, 418. So do we have Tybin Hernandez?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Tybin Hernandez.
I'm Ms. Hernandez. So, a few notes on this. Do you have your appraiser on as well for this one?
Yeah. Roger has been trying to log on. He's been on since, let me call.
No, no, he is being promoted. He's a guru.
Okay.
Okay, okay, Ms. Hernandez, so we are going to be continuing your matter. Basically, the appraisal that we received isn't sufficient to meet our standards. It's not one that we can recognize, and we don't know this appraiser as an expert, so Roger, if you wanna speak to it, a few notes that I have on this appraisal after reviewing is that we need an independent analysis. I know you reference past appraisals that the board has viewed. We can't do that. No copying and pasting from past applications that have gone through us. You can't restate what your client has stated in the findings of fact. That's not helpful for us. And we also need you to provide your credentials, because we can't recognize you as a witness otherwise. So with Roger, I'll let you reply to that.
Can someone unmute him?
Oh, you're on mute, sir.
There you go.
There you go.
Okay, yeah, I provided photos and pictures, and actually, my credentials, that I've been real estate appraiser, general certified for 30 years. At one time, I did a Sears Tower for a turnaround. I believe it's the largest building in Chicago. I did turnarounds on different properties, but I did aerial pictures showing the whole area, and I did another property down Milwaukee Avenue on the 4,000 block that was a Quality A restaurant, and there was probably 80 vacancies on the 4,000 to 4,100 block.
And sir, I'll cut you off there, so we need all, I've got, we've got pictures in your report, but, and I understand that you very well are an appraisal appraiser that we would recognize as an expert, but we can't do that without your CV. So what I would say is we're gonna continue this to December, and
But my CV is in there. Thanks, my resume is in there.
Not that we have. You know, but either way, there's a lot more to do in the appraisal than we can recognize, so let's say, let's get things together. In the next few months, we continue everything two months right now. Right now, we just don't have what we need, so feel free to get in contact with our staff too at ZBA. It's pretty easy to find on the website. So with that, Ms. Hernandez, do you have any questions?
Um, I mean, like, aside from just, he is a recognized certified appraiser, and I have the support of my alderman, so I'm just not understanding. We've been back and forth with the office, sending the application in for since July or August. Just verifying before we even get to get on the schedules, and now you're saying that we have to wait another two months?
Yeah, and I apologize. I know stuff takes time, but we have a pretty stringent process, and with what's been presented to us, and you can go into more in-depth with this with my staff, this is much less. We make a lot of exceptions, but this appraisal is not something we can even near recognize. And I understand he's an appraiser, but in at least the finding of fact I have, I don't have, I don't have the CV. So there's just a lot to be done there, so we will be continuing until December, and that will go to December 17th, 2021.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, no, I can hear you.
At this point, we spent two or three months going around with this, and this is very simple. She has a beauty school, and she wanted something added. Her block is half vacant, and the retail
And, you know, sir, we can't get into the substance of the hearing now. What I will say is there's a whole appraisal copied and pasted by another appraiser that comes in front of us. I know he wouldn't like that, but we can't, it's just, get in touch with our staff. I don't want to go into the sufficient needs of this appraisal, but this is nowhere near what we can recognize, so with that, right now, we
That was just background information of, actually, a beauty, I believe it was just strictly a tattoo parlor that was okayed a mile from Ms. Hernandez's location. And as I said, we spent two or three months getting to this point, and we went back and forth of, here again, it's a beauty shop with, that she's gonna just add permanent makeup to. That's all, and it would add to the block, it would add to the area. That's
No, and I understand it's frustrating. What I'm saying is when we get applications on our end that are just totally deficient, it's also frustrating. So we've gotta get on with our meeting. I'm continuing this until December. No further notice will be given, and again, that's December 17th, 2021. So thanks, everyone, for coming this morning. All right, next up, we are going to 432-21-Z.
Good morning, Chairman Nick Fatikas, on behalf of the applicants, Tim and Danielle Frank.
Great, hey, Counselor, how are you?
Good. I believe this is the first time the case is up. The request is being made on behalf of the alderman's office, and we have no objection to the shortest possible continuance. That's a discretion of the board.
Great, okay, thank you. So again, everyone, this is for 432-21-Z, and we will be continuing this to December 17th, 2021, and no further notice will be given. And, okay, so I also see the alderman's office is on, so I'll make sure they just confirm understanding since they came.
Confirmed.
Okay, who's speaking?
This is Taylor Nessie, the zoning director for the 43rd ward, representing Alderman Michelle Smith.
Okay, great. All right, thanks, Taylor. Sounds like everyone's on board. So again, no further notice will be given. 432-21-Z will be continued to December 17th, 2021.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Okay, next up, we're going to 437-21-S and 438-21-Z.
And again, Chairman Nick Fatikas, for the record, on behalf of the applicant Howard Orloff Imports Incorporated. In working with the department, an additional variation is going to be required. We've already requested the updated denial letter so that we could revise our notice, so a continuance is needed in order to bring the complete application forward to the zoning board.
Okay, great. And let's see, do we have an alderman on for this one? All right, we will continue these two as well, Counselor, to December 17th, 2021. Again, for the board, that's 437-21-S and 438-21-Z, and no further notice will be given. Okay, next up on my list is 446-21-Z.
Good morning, Chairman and Board members. My name is Ben Weber, on behalf of the, on behalf of the applicant Luis Cusco for the property 3343 West Warner, and then that is application number 44621-Z.
Okay, hey there, Counselor. So my understanding is that you will be requesting a continuance. Is that correct?
That is, that is correct. We, the ZBA correctly pointed out some, some issues and some inconsistencies with some updated plans that were unforeseen. We are currently working to submit the revised plans, well, to clarify the revised plans with the architect as well as submit to the ZBA for additional review and possibly an updated denial letter.
Okay, great. Then we will be continuing this, as the others, to December 17th, 2021. This is 446-21-Z, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Counselor. All right, do we have anyone on for 444-21-S?
Yes, Tom Moore.
Hey, Counselor, good morning.
Hi, so this is a case for a special use to allow a ground floor apartment on a block that's entirely, even though it's C-zoned, it's entirely residential, except for an old bar that's closed. And so we were surprised when Nancy told us that the alderman is going to be against it, so my client would like to continue the case and give her an opportunity to go meet with the alderman and try to understand why he would be opposed and tell her a story, so we'd ask for continuance.
Great, and we won't get into the substance of it, but I do see that Alderman Mitchell is on, so I want to give him a chance to speak. So Alderman Mitchell, applicant has requested a continuance, and we're gonna be giving one to December, but feel free to make any comments.
Yeah, good morning, good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, so I recently just found out about this going to ZBA, so that's one. Number two, I thought it was very unfortunate that they didn't think enough of the alderman to come talk to him about this proposal. I don't mind a continuance, then I can explain to them the initiatives that, in the direction of the 7th ward, are we're not amenable to adding additional units in properties where we have hundreds and hundreds of vacant properties in the neighborhood already. So I'm fine with that, so I'll discuss it with the owners.
Great, thanks, Alderman. So yeah, it sounds like everyone is under the understanding that there will be some talks happening in the next couple of months. So again, everyone, this is 444-21-S, and we're gonna continue to December 17th, 2021, which is in two months, and I, no further notice will be given.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and I believe and Alderman Mitchell, while you're on, if you're still with us, I'll go to you, because I think you were going to possibly request something on 332. I'll go to you because I think you were going to, um, possibly request something on three thirty-two.
Correct, correct. Yeah, we, uh, we, we've been in conversation, uh, with the owner of the property with. Perspective tenant. And, um, I spoke with the community organization, so they want to, um, you know, discuss, uh, this potential business. Um, because once again, this is also fine, falling into an area where we're, um. Where it's the seventy-ninth street priority quarter for the Invest Southwest program. We have a lot of things going on there. So the community didn't have an opportunity to meet with her prior to this, so there. They said, considering she's a resident of the community, they will meet with her and discuss this business. So, so we're requesting a continuance to accommodate her.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And, um, with that is, uh, I, I do see them signed in, so is Toyin Amalacho. On the call? Think if we get, uh, Toyin promoted.
Sorry, Chairman, what was the number again, case number?
Um, three thirty-two, so I do see Toyin promoted and, uh, just needs to be unmuted.
Hi.
Hi, Ms. Amalacho, good morning.
Good morning.
So, um, I, I, if you've been listening, you've probably heard and it sounds like there's been, you've already spoken. Um, but the Alderman has requested a continuance on your matter, and I just want to bring that up to you and see if you have any. Comments before we make our decision.
Um, there is no problem about the continuation with the Alderman. Because the Alderman is a very good man to me, there's no problem.
Okay, great. So how, how this will work is, um, you'll come back in two months, that's December seventeenth, twenty twenty one. You know, it sounds like you'll have talked to the community, um, by then, so we will, um, we'll see you then. Does that sound good?
Okay.
Okay, great. So for everyone's notes, this is calendar number three thirty-two dash twenty-one dash S. And we will be continuing until December seventeenth, twenty twenty one.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you, Alderman. Thanks, Ms. Amalacho. Alright, um, looks like we got a couple more. Okay, if we go to thirty-seven dash twenty-one dash S and thirty-eight dash twenty-one dash. And let me see, I believe we're gonna have someone on from the firm of Neil Leroy. Okay, I see Scott raising his hand, there we go. Counselor Borstein, let us know when you're on.
I think Chairman, we lost him while he was being promoted.
Okay, we'll circle back, um. Let's go to calendar number three thirty-five dash twenty-one dash Z.
Attorney Borstein is now here, sorry.
Okay, okay, great, okay. So let's stick with it, thirty-seven and thirty-eight. Counselor Borstein, are you on?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. Um, and also just, uh, the, I should have. Um, Alderman Irvin. I see Alderman, Counselor Moore on the screen here, is he?
Sorry, he's muted now. One calls, okay. Is, is Alderman Irvin on?
Is he, he, he said he was gonna be joining, I, I, I hope he's here.
He's not here, Chairman.
Do you know what, um, Scott, do you know if he was sending a person from staff? What that name would be?
I, I don't know. Uh, my client, uh, interfaced with him and she said that he was planning to join. Because we, 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 we understand this has been a lot of back and forth on this case. And, um, so we wanted to have the Alderman make the request for continuance because we just, we need more time.
Okay, so let's see if you can get him on. Because, uh, we all know these numbers far too well on this case, it's been from us, so. Um, there might need to be a little extra ammo for us to grant the continuance. So, um, see if you can track them down in five minutes, I'm gonna continue down our list.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Great, thanks. Okay, so calendar number three thirty-five dash twenty-one dash Z.
Again, Chairman Nick Fatikas, for the record, on behalf of the, we are going to, uh, withdraw this application without prejudice. Uh, three thirty-five twenty-one Z would be withdrawn.
Great. Thanks, Counselor. So everyone, three thirty-five dash twenty-one dash Z will be withdrawn on the record.
Um, and then I'm actually up on the next item, Chairman.
Three thirty-six dash twenty-one dash S, go ahead.
Yes, sir. So we actually, in working with the Department of Planning and Development, um, we identified that the proposed, uh, convenience store addition. Uh, the proposed floor in total actually exceeds what was written up in the denial letter. Um, so we're working with the department to get a revised denial letter that correctly, um, identifies or describes the proposed expansion. Um, so we do need a continuance so that we can, uh, have again, an application consistent with the denial letter.
Great, and is, um, do you think two months is gonna be enough?
I do, I do. We actually already made the request to staff, um, so we're hoping to have the denial letter probably within the next week, week and a half. We'll have more than enough time to renotice, uh, and we'll be prepared to go in December if, if that date's available.
Great, yep, we will put this one as well, calendar number three thirty-six, dash twenty-one dash S. On December seventeenth, twenty twenty one. Um, and as always, no further notice will be given.
Great, thank you so much.
Yes, thanks, Counselor. Okay. Let's circle back and close this out to. Actually, I'll say first, is anyone else on the call asking for a continuance or withdrawal that we didn't cover? Okay, so Counselor Borstein, when you're ready, let's chat on thirty-seven and thirty-eight twenty-one dash S. Scott, I just promoted you.
Thanks, uh, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I did just get ahold of my client and she said that she was gonna contact the Alderman, so. Hopefully he is joining momentarily here.
Okay, and, and Scott, so. You know, e- everything is, is how I feel, that it's just better for you all to withdraw and refile. We, we've had no movement on this and we've asked for movement, um, for quite a long time. So, you know, I almost think we like refresh the, the relationship on the docket, and I don't think there's much of. A detriment to you, so long as you ask for the withdrawal.
Um, well, I, you know, I guess one, one detriment, of course, is that we would have to repeat everything, right? And go through the whole process all over again, including community meetings and so forth, so.
I think you're almost at having to go through the community meeting process anyway. Because when was the community meeting?
You know, I'm gonna have to ask my client to, to. Get on and give all the history, because as you, I don't know if you might recall, but in our office, there was another lawyer who was handling this and. She's no longer at our firm, and so they, they asked me to step in today just to ask for another continuance, and so. But one thing is, and, and I get, I want the Alderman to, to, you know, testify, but. There's, there is community support for this. He, he is helping trying to promote this business and, um. I see my client here is joined too, so, uh, you know. Uh, there is movement. I, I know it may not appear that there is, but, um. You know, there's been a lot of back and forth with the department. They've asked for things, we've provided, they've asked for more, whatever. I know you know the history. Um, but so, there is movement, but it's tough. Um, i- it's tough, this is a, a, an effort to, you know. Get a business going in a, in an area that needs the business, uh, by people who we want to get businesses, you know. Uh, um. Working in these, in this area, so, again, I, I, I would hope or. Would ask again for the, uh, the board's indulgence, and again, hopefully, the Alderman will join us and he can ask as well.
I know we have, um, I, I believe we just promoted Karen Riley. And I also see Alderman, Alderman, uh, Irvin as well, so welcome to you both. Um, uh, yeah, Ms. Riley, so, so one thing that's gonna happen, we see that this has been. Um, the, your community meeting was, uh, was January twenty twenty one, is that correct?
Um, yes, I, I think we actually ended up having additional community meeting. Because we actually crossed the line into the, to the incorrect ward, so we ended up having the meeting down the street from our, um. Our proposed facility, and, um, we do have all of that documentation, it has been submitted to.
Okay, so I actually, I'm seeing now too, it, so it's been on our, our, um, our books here since January and procedurally on these. If your community meeting, uh, has, basically you have one year to come in front of us and do everything since your community meeting. I think your community meeting was more November, December. Um, so, so what I'm, I'm recommending here is. Uh, unless we see that the community meeting was November. And, um, you're gonna have to re-give notice anyway, so. Asking for a withdrawal and refiling wouldn't harm you. In fact, it might help you because it means that. If we see you in December, or, sorry, that next month, I'm not dismissing you flat out. Because your community meeting, one year gap has elapsed. Does that make sense? I'm kind of working through it as we go.
Yes, and I, I'm afraid to just really go to my file and verify that date because I might lose, lose you. Um, but.
I actually, we just got it, I think it was August twenty twenty, so.
Okay. Alderman Irving is on, if you would, like, maybe if he, if you wanted to ask him a couple of questions and I can just verify really quickly.
Yeah, welcome, Alderman. And just so you know, uh, we're not in any way questioning the substance of the matter, we're more making sure we get process right on community notice. Um, but Alderman, uh, feel free to, to make any remarks. Uh-oh, uh, hey, hey, Alderman, we've got some feedback issues, so if you turn off your camera, we might be able to hear you a little better.
Did you hear me?
We, now we can hear you. We didn't hear a word you just said.
You know what, okay, maybe it's the video, I turned, they turned the video off, so, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so as I stated, uh, I have no objection to, uh, holding the matter. Uh, you know, if, if additional time is needed, uh, to garner whatever is, is necessary, so I just wanted to. Uh, state that for the record, uh, and if you have any questions of me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, and yeah, thanks, Alderman, um, for coming, and, and you know, we're just looking, Ms. Riley, we're looking through the. Um, the law pretty quick, and. I believe it looks like you held your, just as a timeline, the community meeting was held in August twenty twenty. Which makes, you were on our books January twenty twenty one. Um, so therefore, we have a drop, what, what we'll call it, a, a drop dead date on this matter of December. Um. I don't think this is good for you to continue to December with that drop dead date, because what we would do there is, is say. Um, uh, you know, they're just. Um, where, whereas if you were to withdraw and refile, you kind of restart the clock. Like, it sounds like you're probably gonna have to have another community. This sent out anyway, um, because of how long this has gone on. Um, so, you know, that's, that's my recommendation. And I'd love to hear from you what, what you think of that.
I believe that with the latest submission of documents that we provided to DPD. And that, um, we are so very close. I'd love to hear, um, from DPD to. Um, see if we can't, you know, um, get this all resolved. If we could go to a December date, I think that it actually would. Work perfect in terms of any additional information that needs to be exchanged. And if we, um, we could probably even notice up a, a community meeting in, in, within that timeframe. If, if, if that would be acceptable. So, and I'm willing to do that, um.
Okay, let's, yeah, and we'll hear, I like your suggestion to hear from DPD, because I think, um, we had Steve on. Let's see if we have Steve Valenziano, Valenziano on from the department still.
Yeah, Chairman.
Hey there, Steve, so we're addressing, um, can it be growth that's thirty-seven and thirty-eight?
Yeah.
Um, uh. There's a bit of a timing issue where they're almost out of time on, on their notice, and we've continued and continued. Um. So there's not even really a specific question from you, just wondering if there's department recommendation on how we handle this in any way.
Well, I mean, we've been working with the applicant, or staff has been working with the applicant, trying to get, um. Some more details and, and, and get some, uh, issues nailed down with, uh. Their HVAC systems and how they're gonna handle that with the neighboring, uh, residential, uh, properties. And, um, it's been a long, uh, slog through that, and by now, like you had said earlier. Uh, they have had their meeting so long ago, and the information that they had at that time and what they have now is completely different. And I think that, at, at, at a minimum, they need to go back out to the community, but at this point. Um, it would be the department's recommendation, uh, that they withdraw and refile as a new application. And, and do, and have their community meeting and, and, and let's start fresh, because we've been. This has been sitting with the board for month, uh, almost a year now. So, uh, but that's up to, you know, it's, it's your call, um, that's our. But we have no, again, we have no problem with the, the use, uh, it's the location and the proximity to, uh, neighboring residential properties.
Yep, yeah, and, um. Thanks for that, Steve, and I, I totally agree that, you know, a lot has changed in a year, there needs to be some sort of. Uh, new meeting, especially where we are on the dates. So, Ms. Riley, I am gonna ask you, because we've had this for so long. Um, to withdraw and do the refiling, um, and hopefully, it, you know. Uh, it starts everything anew. Of course, we're out in the community, there's new notice, but with us that. Um, we're meeting, we're meeting dates. I understand a ton of work goes into this. Um, but I think we can really have a, a better process set if you withdraw and refile.
May I, may I respond?
Sure, of course.
So I, I can appreciate that being, um, a, 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 a possible option, but we have put a lot of work into this. We have not always been the reason why the matter has been continued. I am not, um, pointing fingers, but sometimes the department. Um, all of the departments that have to coordinate on this project have not been able to review what we submit in a timely fashion. Um, and, and on our side, we may have been, you know, a little longer in getting the documentation. But that is part of what this program is all about. We're coming in as, as, uh, social equity applicants, uh, for cannabis business establishment. And we're learning as we go along, as well as, you know, trying to be as, um, efficient and productive. efficient and productive as possible. I would really um, ask that you allow us to have a community meeting and continue us to the December date. And if, you know, and I do understand if you were to rule against us and not approve our application, that would also be um, problematic, but I think.
That's the word. Yeah, it would argue that that's much worse than withdrawing and repiling.
I, and I get that. But then are you, are you, are, are, am I able to ask for fees to be waived on the refile?
Um, so that's not, that's not my jurisdiction. Um, I've got to say, so you'll have to uh, talk about that in the background. But um, so I do want to get, just because responsiveness came up, um, I want to get if Nancy Radzovich is on from Department of Planning and Development, um, just to get any feedback from her on what the responsiveness and timing has looked like on both sides. And Nancy, I see you on. I just think you're muted.
Hi, good morning.
Morning.
Chairman and members of the board.
Morning Nancy. So um, I, you've probably heard, we're talking about just process. It's only process.
Understood.
And uh, Ms. Riley um, brought up potential responsiveness issues, communications between, I think honestly, between applicant lawyers and the department. So I, of course, when that comes up, want you to have the opportunity to address it for the department.
Of course. Um, from, from my standpoint, I'm, I'm just going to speak to kind of the review of what's been coming in and, and how it's been, um, how we kind of send it out. So there are multiple departments that do need to review this. So it's, you know, DPD, um, but, but a bulk of this is also on the health department because what we're talking about is the potential impacts of the odors. So um, we did have um, multiple back and forth. And I, I did look up uh, last night, you know, we had a Zoom call. I want to say it was back in March, where it was the former attorney, it was the applicant, um, myself, uh, one of our regional planners, and then we had representatives from the health department. And we spent a good, I'm going to say probably hour, um, kind of explaining what we needed and, and explaining why we needed it, right? Like just kind of explaining the whole process and what was needed. I do know that some of these comments that we've um, put out there have been, have been um, provided multiple times. So you know, at that time in March, we said, you've got to have someone look at the ventilation system and make sure that, that it's properly designed for impacts, et cetera, et cetera. And, and always have been emphasizing coordination between whomever their mechanical uh, designer is and their architect. And then we'd get a recent middle and there'd still be a disconnect between the, the drawings and the plans. So there have been some comments that, that we've repeatedly asked for, uh, the screening of, of the um, RTU units, those types of things. But there are some things that, as she had indicated, as the applicant has indicated, that when they provide us some information, which is normal, you know, it, it opens up some additional questions. So you know, I know there were some additional um, questions that were raised by the health department for additional clarifications for sure. But some of the other comments were, were definitely things that we had asked for um, previously.
And I'm going to just add that, you know, what Nancy is saying is correct. I think it was, you know, March when we all sat down to have a discussion and then it, it was continued. And if we, looking in hindsight, we should have taken longer continuances to make sure we had, you know, dotted all the i's, crossed all the t's instead of, you know, going month to month. And then it wouldn't look so um, like we've been kind of going at it the same um, way. But I think the information we hired on a mechanical engineer, and I won't say hired on, but we have a committed mechanical engineer working on the project now. And um, you know, he's been on, I guess, the last couple of times. And so coordinating his drawings with architectural drawings are something that has been this last um, bit of information, making sure that everything was aligned um, from the mechanical perspective and the architectural perspective. And uh, you know, we've been trying to make sure that we are, are, are adhering to what's been asked. And, and I can just say that we've moved farther along than we have been. It's not like we're making any backstrokes. We're actually, you know, really making progress. And so the procedural piece of this is, is just like going to be, you know, I, I could almost like scream because on the substantive, substantive side, we've um, I think, you know, are at a point where everybody is comfortable with the project and thinks that it is viable and can actually, you know, stand up.
Okay. So, and I'm going to, Ms. Riley, I'm going to, um, I'm going to ask this. If we continue this one month and you're not ready, I will dismiss without any further conversation. Because even today, it sounds like a lot of city resources are being used, but even today, a lot of time has passed.
Yes, yes.
So I, I wanted, I want you to know that. And, and, and again, give you the final option to refile and uh, withdraw and refile because there isn't a huge, I see a lot of benefits to that. I really do. But with that, I do hear and I do know a lot of work is going in. Um, I just want to make clear that we won't even talk about it. It will just be dismissed.
Well, you, you, Chair, sir, could we just make this to December and give us the time? I could notice up a community meeting. I want to, I want the community to understand. We have community sort, support from the Garfield um, Community Council. We have um, written documents from the neighbors, you know, saying that they don't object to it. And I know that that's dated. So if we could just have until December, I think a lot of all these, all the answers will be in place. And, and we can do December with no conversation. If we're not ready, if we're not all in alignment, I won't even come on to the call.
Sure. And just so you know, if that happens in December, um, it will add more to your timeline than if we did it right now. I just want you to know that. Um, there'll, there'll have to be a re-notice, a, a re-community meeting, um, just a bunch of steps. So um, I, I am giving, I am giving you the choice. But yeah, counselor, and let's make it quick because we got to get on with the meeting.
No, and I appreciate, I just want Karen to understand too, because I, I hear you and it's a, it's a risk. But so if, if for whatever reason, we don't get it together and we, and we're not ready in December, the case is going to be dismissed. Is this, is there the rule that you cannot refile within one year? Or we can refile af, even after being dismissed? I just want Karen to understand that.
They can refile, she can refile and then they have to get a denial. So it's almost like that process starts at a later time, right? It starts in December.
Yeah.
January holidays instead of right now.
Okay. So it's, I just want to make sure. I, I, right. Okay. So Karen, we can refile, but like we talked before, right? We're going to have to rinse and repeat, right? Go through everything all over again, new denial and so forth. So that's the risk that we just have to evaluate.
Okay.
Okay. And Chair, so that I can get you, so you can move on. May I have until end of date so I can consult with council and we can really have a, a deeper dive on the conversation or?
Unfortunately, unfortunately, we need it right now.
Okay. I'm going to take the risk and go to December.
Okay, good. And uh, I just want to note, everyone knows, but we won't even talk about it in December. If it's not ready, um, uh, it will just be a dismissal because we've spent um, several months uh, worth of continuance discussions right now. So um, again, this is calendar number 37 dash 21 dash S and 38 dash 21 dash S. We'll hear it December 17th, 2021. No further notice will be given and we all understand um, what will happen if it's not ready.
Thank you so much.
Great. Yep. Thanks, everyone. Have a good day.
You too.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Uh, that was a, that was a, a long one. My answer continuance is, so I appreciate everyone's patience. Let's get into the meeting. First up that we are going to call calendar number 412 dash 21 dash S.
Hi, we're here.
Hi, there you go. Thanks for your patience on this. Um, so for this matter, Department of Planning and Development is going to read the special use recommendation. So Nancy, what's your, once you're on, I'll get you sworn in. Nancy, are you on?
I, I am. Apologies. I, I just got kicked to full screen and now I've um, lost my uh, document here. Sorry. Let me pull this back up. Okay. Um, do you need to square me in?
Yeah. So Nancy, can you please state your name and um, your, your role with the department?
Absolutely. Uh, Nancy Razovich, Assistant Commissioner with the Zoning Bureau in the Department of Planning and Development.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great. Thank you very much. So go right ahead and read the recommendation.
Yep. Um, this is case number 41221S, correct?
Yes.
The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair and nail salon. The department finds that the proposal complies with all the applicable standards of the zoning ordinance, is in the interest of public convenience and will not have significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood. The department also finds the hair and nail salon will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of building scale and design and operating characteristics. Lastly, the proposed hair and nail salon is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So, so Ms. Herrera, now it goes to you. Um, and I understand uh, you are pro se, meaning you're representing yourself. Is that correct?
Yes.
Great. So I'm going to swear you in. Um, can you please state your name and address?
Angelica Herrera, 6303 West Gren Avenue, Chicago, 60639.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Okay, great. Ms. Herrera, um, tell us a little bit about what brings you here today.
Okay. Uh, I had my salon for uh, almost 30 years and I just want to add the nails, nails, nail service. Because um, I do this for two things, to help me bring my customers back after the pandemic and uh, to help also my customers because they don't want to go different places. So I have a, the hair and nail in one place.
Great. And so um, it sounds like you've been in, is this at this location with hair?
Yes, yes. For almost 30 years, yes.
30 years.
For, for hair, yes.
Okay, that's great. And customer demands led you to doing nails. Do you have experience doing nails? Or are you going to be hiring people who have experience doing nails?
Yeah, I'm going to hire people. And also I do, I don't, when I went to school, uh, we used to, we have the nail uh, license too.
Great. Okay. Um, wonderful. And will you be changing your hours at all with this?
No, no.
So largely things will be operating the same as they always have?
Yes, yes.
Great. Any questions from the board? Okay, Ms. Herrera, thank you so much for your time today and we'll take this under consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Enjoy the weekend. Okay, we're going to move now to calendar number 413 dash 21 dash S. So let's see if we have the applicant on. Yeah, Ms. Del Carmen Coyote, um, let us know if uh, if you can get unmuted and can hear and see us.
Yeah, she can see, we can see you.
Okay, great. Okay. So the Department of Planning and Development will read the recommendation and then we'll get started.
Thank you. Uh, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair salon. The department finds that this proposal complies with all applicable standards of the zoning ordinance, is in the interest of public convenience and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood. The department also finds the hair salon will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of building scale and design and operating characteristics. Lastly, the proposed hair salon is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, Ms. Del Carmen Coyote, can you please state your name and address?
It's 2900 Norlara Mina Avenue.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Sí.
Thank you. And let me, um, also, I, I understand you have uh, a translator present. So ma'am, can you also state your name and address and I'll get you sworn in as a translator?
Okay. My name is Aurora Monroe. My home address, is that what you want or the business address?
Um, yeah, yeah, either's fine.
Okay. Uh, 2584 Allen Dale Lane, Rockville, Illinois, 60560. And I am the translator.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Monroe. And do you swear or affirm uh, to tell the truth in today's proceedings as well as translate directly what I'm saying into, I believe we're speaking Spanish, correct?
Yes.
Directly into Spanish and directly what Ms. Del Carmen Coyote is saying from Spanish to English?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Um, so with that, Ms. Del Carmen Coyote, what brings you here today?
I'm here for a solution because my, my, um, the application for a license was denied.
Okay, yes. So um, tell us what you're trying to do. I understand you're opening a hair salon. If you could explain a bit about your experience, um, uh, what led you to opening one, the hours, things like that.
Yo tengo 10, este, 20 años en esta carrera. I have 20 years in this career. Estoy trabajando en un salón por 17 años. I've been working in a salon for 17 years. Yo estoy queriendo abrir ahorita un salón de belleza porque me siento ya una persona ya mayor. I, I want to open now a beauty salon because I feel that I'm now an older person. Necesito hacer algo para mi futuro que, que tal vez ya no pueda trabajar en unos cinco o diez años más. I want to do something for my future in case I can no longer work somewhere else. Y tener un, para, tener para poder este, suscitar. To have a business so I can support myself. En, en este. Sí, o los horarios de tu negocio. Los horarios de mi negocio serían de nueve de la mañana a, a siete de la tarde. The uh, the hours of operation would be from nine o'clock to seven o'clock.
And how many employees do you intend to have? Because I see, we've got like four stations on the map.
Me gustaría este, como se llama, emplear cuatro personas. I would like to employ some, uh, four people.
Great. Okay. Any questions from the board? All right. Thank you both. And Ms. Del Carmen Coyote will take this under consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy the weekend.
You too.
Okay, we're going to go to calendar number 415 dash 21 dash S at 4411 North Kimball. So Jasmine Jimenez, let us know when you're present.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can. Thank you, Ms. Jimenez.
Thank you. Hi, who are you? Good morning.
Good, thanks. Um, so we're going to have Nancy Radzovich from the department read the recommendation and then we'll get started, okay?
Yes, sir.
Great. Uh, Nancy, with that, can you read the rec for 415 dash 21 dash S?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed nail salon. The department finds that this proposal complies with all applicable standards of the zoning ordinance, is in the interest of public convenience and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood. The department also finds the nail salon will be. The department also finds the nail salon will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of building scale and design and operating characteristics. Lastly, the proposed nail salon is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort.
Thank you. Ms. Jimenez, will you now state your name and address?
My name is, which address, home or business?
Either one works for us.
Okay, Jasmine Jimenez, forty-four eleven North Kimball Avenue.
Great. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So what brings you here today?
So my business, I need a special use permit, or a special use, I'm sorry, because my business is within a hundred feet close to another personal service, a bar, I mean, a bar, I'm sorry, a barber shop. And that, that will be all.
Great. Can you tell us a bit about your experience cutting hair? Have you, have you worked in a salon, you manage a salon? What's that?
I, I don't cut hair. I'm a nail salon.
Oh, sorry. I was switching this. Can you tell us about your experience doing nails? If you've worked at a nail salon or ran one before?
Yes, I can. My history, I've been licensed for about six years now with the city of Illinois. I've traveled throughout the city, working in different salons. And I just felt with the pandemic, it was time to expand my, my, my business and grow as a nail salon.
Great. Do you plan to employ individuals?
In the future, I do. I would love to have a, a team, yes.
Great. Perfect. And what type of hours do you intend?
I would love to work between eight in the morning till seven at night.
Seven days a week, or?
Yeah, it's a new business. You know, I have to hustle and bustle.
Sure. And I understand that you've spoken to your older person. We have a letter in support.
Yes, sir.
From your older person. Other questions from the board?
Nope.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I always, I think it's because I speak too fast, but I always phrase this wrong. It's, are there any questions from the board? Okay, I don't hear any Ms. Jimenez. So thank you very much for your time, and we'll take this under consideration.
Okay, what is the next step, sir?
So at the end of this meeting, so sometime by the end of the day, we will vote, and you can either find it on the board's website in the next couple of days, the result, or you can watch our vote at the end of the meeting. But you'll know within a couple of days.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Have a good weekend.
You too. Bye-bye.
Okay, next up, we've got calendar number four sixteen dash twenty-one dash S at twenty-three twenty North Park.
Hello?
Hey there, is this, we have Isabel Vu?
Yes.
Great. Also Lana Unwin.
And my name is Jerry Chenaud Cepa. I'm a translator and a sister in case if she has any problem.
Great. And we're getting some feedback. So can you make sure there's only one computer on?
Okay. Let's, let me turn up my computer.
Sure.
Okay, all right. We see that.
There we go. That's better. So I'll now have Nancy Razovich read the department's recommendation, and then we'll get going.
Thank you. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed nail salon. The department finds that this proposal complies with all applicable standards of the zoning ordinance, is in the interest of the public convenience, and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood. The department also finds the nail salon will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of building scale and design and operating characteristics. Lastly, the proposed nail salon is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort.
Thank you very much. Okay. Ms. Vu, let's, let's get the translators sworn in first. So to the translator, can you please state your name and address?
Yes, my name is Jerry Chen. I'm a CP, also a real estate manager broker at ten twenty-three and a half West Argyle, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six four zero.
Great, thank you very much. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings as well as translate directly from what I'm saying to the language that the applicant prefers? And then vice versa, from the language the applicant prefers to English?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much. And with that, Ms. Vu, will you please state your name and address?
So my name is Isabel Vu, and the address is twenty-three twenty North Clark, Chicago, Illinois, six, zero, six, one four?
Great.
Yeah, one four.
Yep. Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
And do we also have Alana Unwin on?
Alana, she's, she's actually sick today. She could not make it today, unfortunately.
Yep, no worries. So Ms. Vu, with that, what brings you here today?
I'm, 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 I'm.
So I need to apply for the special use?
Yes. The reason she's here is to apply for a special use for the business license.
Great. And tell us a little bit about your experience in the nail salon industry.
I've been.
So I, I worked as nail tech. So it's almost eight years already. And I, so I, I take the, this business is around two years.
Okay. Basically, you say that she's a nail technician for eight years, and she bought the business for two years ago.
Yep, good. And, good. And Ms. Vu, we can, we can understand too. So feel free to, let me use the translator when, when required. This property has been operating as a nail salon for quite some time, right?
Okay, yeah, I can, I am an landlord, but it's been a long, it's been a long time, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Great. And this, was this the nail salon that you previously worked in?
The, 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 I am an landlord, but it's been a long time, right?
Yeah.
No.
No, okay. Then with that, do you intend to hire employees, and what are your hours going to be?
I am, I am.
Um, so it's around four employees and the time it, so I will open seven days a week and open ten to around seven.
Great. Wonderful. Any questions from the board? Okay, Ms. Vu, we'll take this under consideration, and thanks very much for coming in today.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yep, yeah. Enjoy the weekend.
Bye-bye.
Thanks, bye.
Bye. All right, everybody. Let's go to our first variation of the day. That's calendar number four seventeen dash twenty-one dash Z. So Renee Munoz, let us know when you are present.
Good morning. This is Renee.
Morning, sir. You're not driving, are you?
No, I'm just setting gear in the truck.
Okay, very good. This is something that we see, and it always makes me nervous. So, good. Anyway, welcome. We'll get started right away. This is calendar number four seventeen dash twenty-one dash Z. And Mr. Munoz, before we get started, can you please state your name and address?
Yes, Renee Munoz, forty-seven twenty-two South Trip, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six three two.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Great. All right. Can you tell us a little bit about the variation you are asking for? And anything else we should know before we get to questions on you?
Yes, I'm applying for a permit to rebuild this residential two, two apartment house. And I want to add more space between the first floor and the attic to have more, a few more rooms for, for my immediate family and extended family that comes to visit.
Okay. And how long have you owned this property?
It's about a year. I purchased it about a year ago, and it had some violation problems and, and things of that nature. So we're gonna be doing all this work to the house. And I just thought it made sense to, to build a little bit more, the first and the second, the attic space, to make it more comfortable, as a more, instead of an apartment, more like a residence.
Great. And just to be, to be clear, so the violations on the property, those all predate your ownership, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Perfect. And we don't need to discuss those, but we had them referenced in a letter, so I want to bring them up. How have, has, have you discussed this project with the neighbors at all?
I've talked to, to one of my neighbors, just in casual talk, you know, and they say they were happy to see the house being renovated and, and get it going.
Yep, okay. And so as we look at these plans and where it wasn't, where it was in violation in the past, is the new, or is, sorry, it's not new, is the basement that's currently illegal, is that part of the new building permit? Will we be putting that into conformity?
Yes, I believe under the, the architect, when he did the investigation, it's always been a, a two apartments, but it's really been in bad condition, so it's gotta get redone.
Yep. Okay, so we just want to make sure that that illegal basement will be part of the, part of the permit, and it sounds like you're saying yes?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Okay, other questions from the board? Okay, I have one final one, Mr. Munoz, that you touched on. So with it being a two-dwelling unit, will you be renting out the other dwelling unit, or will it only be for family?
The first and the dormer part is only gonna be for ourselves and family. And then the basement unit, we look forward to finding some tenants.
Okay. Okay.
Or unless we use it all ourselves, but.
Yep.
For the immediate time, I think with the first floor and the dormer, we should have plenty of space.
Great. All right. Any questions from the board?
This is Commissioner Esposito. What is your intended schedule for the work?
The schedule for the work is really, I already got my contractor lined up, depending on the, on the permit process and the contractor's availability with other jobs.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Commissioner. Other questions? All right. Mr. Munoz, we will take this under consideration. We appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Have a good weekend, all.
You too. Okay, let's go to calendar numbers four nineteen dash twenty-one dash Z and four twenty dash twenty-one dash Z at, sorry, at forty-five thirty North Beacon Avenue.
Good morning. This is Attorney Walker.
Good counsel, good morning.
Good morning to you, Mr. Chairman, and to the members of the board. For the record, my name is Tamara Walker and Walker and Associates. My office is located at ten sixteen West Jackson in Chicago, Illinois. I am appearing before you today on behalf of the applicant, Seeds of Joy Enterprises NFP, which is located at forty-five thirty North Beacon Street. Mr. Derek Davis is the owner and manager of the applicant business, Seeds of Joy Enterprises, and he is in attendance on the call today. We also have our expert land use consultant, Mr. Kareem Musawir on the call. The applicant is seeking approval of two applications for variations. The first application is for a variation to reduce the rear yard setback from the required fifty point one four feet to twenty-two point one six feet. This is the south side yard setback. It's gonna be from four feet to zero feet. The north side setback would be to four point oh six feet. And the combined side yard setbacks would go from ten feet to four point zero six feet. Now, the second variation application is to reduce the rear yard open space from the required five hundred and forty-one point fifty-two square feet to zero. That's gonna be in order to erect rear decks that would be open, and that would provide a trash enclosure. And the whole intent is to prepare for a new daycare facility at the location. That's gonna be in the conversion of an existing three-story, single-family residence that does have a rooftop elevator, penthouse, as well as off-street parking for five automobiles on site. The proposal is located on a eight thousand three hundred thirty-seven point sixty-six square foot lot. And it's improved with an eight thousand six hundred fifty-three square foot, three-story, thirty feet, five inches in height, masonry, single-family residence with a third, three thousand seven hundred sixty square foot basement. It's in a RS-three residential single unit. It's a detached house in a district on the Dover Street historical area. So I would like to call Mr. Davis in support of this application.
Great, thank you, Counselor. And Mr. Davis, if you're unmuted, can you please state your name and address?
I'll text him, because he's definitely, we've been communicating all morning.
There, there, I saw the unmute. I saw unmute. Mr. Davis, are you on?
Yes.
Okay, there he is.
Great. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Derek Davis, and my address, eight two eight West Gray Street, Unit nine oh six, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six one three.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you.
All righty, thank you, Chairman. Mr. Davis, please state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Derek Davis. My address is eight two eight West Gray Street, Unit nine oh six, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six one three.
And you are the manager of the applicant Seeds of Joy Enterprises NFP?
Yes.
And are you here today before the board to establish a new daycare facility at forty-five thirty North Beacon Street, which is located in an RS-three residential, single-unit, detached house district?
Yes.
All right. So in order to accomplish your goal of this daycare facility, it would require you to have approval of two variation applications, one of which would be to reduce the required rear yard open space from five hundred forty-one point five two square feet to zero square feet, along with a companion variation application to reduce the required setbacks, the rear setback from fifty point four one square feet to twenty-two point one six square feet, the south side setback from four feet to zero feet, the north side setback to four point oh six feet, and the combined side yard setbacks from ten feet to four point oh six feet in order to erect rear yard open decks, trash enclosure, five-car off-street parking, an on-site parking lot at the rear of the facility, and a one hundred and forty-two point four one square foot rooftop elevator penthouse will also be erected if these variation applications are approved. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is it true that you've been in the childcare industry for over fifteen years?
Yes.
And you completed your advanced teaching certificate in early childhood education before you started your first home-based daycare back in two thousand and six?
Yes, well, I finished, I got my license, I believe, in twenty-eleven, but I finished all the other classes, but then I got my certificate, the last class, a couple of years, a few years later, yes.
Okay. So it's fair to say that you had some certifications in two thousand and six that have continued through present?
Yes, yes. I, I do have my advanced teaching certificate, but I got it, I want to say, a few years ago. I have one class left.
Got you, got you, got you. So is it true that you currently operate two childcare center facilities in Chicago?
Yes.
All right. And that you're proposing to rehab the existing three-story? Right, and that you're proposing to rehab the existing three-story, single-family residence into a daycare center that can accommodate childcare services for up to ninety-seven children with no more than fifteen employees per shift?
Yes.
And it's true that the age range will be, um, twenty-seven kids who are in the two-year-old age category, twenty-four kids in the three-to-five-year-old category, and forty-six kids that are six to twelve years old?
Yes.
So it would, I would assume that especially for the six to twelve-year-olds, that would be after-school care as well as before-school care?
Yes, before and after school.
And is it true that yourself and your employees would be the ones utilizing the off-street parking at the rear of the facility?
Yes.
So, let's go back to your history with this building. So in two thousand and eight, when the property became vacant, you and your mom traveled to see it, and you knew that it would be a great location for a school. Is that correct? So then, in twenty eighteen, um, you returned and you were able to notice three jerseys, one for baseball, one for football, and one for basketball, that all said Dee Davis from the previous owner, which you took as a sign, uh, after which you took the property under contract, and you were able to close after two years, and you're still in possession of those faithful jerseys. Is that correct?
Yes.
And is it true that recently you had the opportunity to meet with John Cusick, who is the Beacon Street Block Club President, along with other residents and block club members, on September twenty-eighth at the Sunnyside Mall, and Alderman Kappelman and staff representatives were also present at this meeting?
Yes.
And is it true that Alderman Kappelman, uh, is in support of this project? He spoke very highly of you and your business at that meeting, and he stated that after your project is complete, uh, that it still wouldn't be enough childcare facilities. You guys would still need more. Is that correct?
Yes.
And is it true that you have the support of neighbors, that in fact, several neighbors have approached you with excitement about the new school, and they appreciate that you're restoring this historic building? Is that correct?
Yes.
And you also went to the Alderman's office and requested a loading zone in front of the building, which was granted by the Department of Transportation, and will be available for for use for your building from seven AM until the end of your daily operations?
Yes.
All right. So I have no further questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Davis.
Thank you.
Um, let's, you know, I'd like to hear a little bit about, um, drop-off in parking in the area.
Mm-hmm.
Davis, on how how you view this, since it is, uh, you know, it's a residential area that, and this will service, uh, ninety-seven kids is no small amount, so.
Is that question for me?
Yeah, that would be great, Mr. Davis. So how do you envision? Public, etc.
I'm sorry, you froze for a second?
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now. You froze for a second.
Sweet. Um, okay, let me know if you need me to repeat it, but I'm asking if you, i- i- if you can go over, uh, parking and drop-off process.
So the children start being dropped off from seven AM to nine AM. So it's a two-hour window, so certain parents have to be at work at different times. So it's not like a regular CPS school where everybody needs to be there at nine o'clock or eight-thirty AM. So they'll be coming in differently, and the majority of the clients that I currently have are homeless. They stay in Salvation Army, as well as Cornerstone and Sylvia Center, so they don't have vehicles, so they're gonna be walking. And a lot of, um, a lot of times, which was one of the Beacon Block Club's concerns, um, I had to explain it to them as well, uh, the the majority of our clients are multifamily, so it'd be like, some of my parents have five kids, some of them have three, you know, so it's not ninety-seven cars. You know, it's more like maybe, maybe thirty cars, maybe, and it'd be during those times from seven to nine.
Great, that's, that's helpful. Um, any questions from the board?
This is Commissioner Esposito. Um, I have a question about, again, related to operation. Um, since you are using all the outdoor space on the property for parking, can you describe, will there be the outdoor activities? For the kids whose charge you're in?
Yes, sir. That's where the rooftop deck will come into place. The children be able to, uh, either take take the elevator or take the stairs all the way up to the rooftop. And we plan on, uh, having like a garden, so we have a community garden now, so we plan on continuing with that and teaching the kids how to plant and grow their own fruits and vegetables. But we also, um, have possession of forty-five, forty-four, twenty-five North Magnolia, where that is a CPS school. I just signed the lease for that. I should get the keys today prayerfully. And so the children will be able to also go two blocks down and play in that playlot as well.
Well, thank you. And then, uh, further than, if 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 the children will be on the roof, can you describe any safety, uh, measures that have been designed into the project?
We haven't, um, so of course, we're gonna have, uh, raise the parapets and things of that nature. Um, it will be very secure. I've been doing this for fifteen years. I've never had any issues with any of my children. But it will be very secure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions from the board for Mr. Davis? Okay, Counselor, um, do you want to get, uh, Kareem Musawir on the record?
I do. I was just about to request that, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Go right ahead, yep.
All right, so I call Mr. Kareem Musawir as my second witness.
Morning.
Morning. And Kareem, will you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, sir. My name is Kareem Musawir, a land use consultant here in Chicago at two-twenty-one Rutherford South.
Great. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. And, uh, you know, we don't need to recognize you on this type of, uh, application, but we recognize that you've you've appeared many times before.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Alright, so Mr. Musawir, we'll get straight into your testimony. Um, so I filed an application for this matter, which included findings of fact, as well as your land use report. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And in that report, you made a determination that this proposal meets the standards required for an application for the approval of the requested variation.
Correct.
Have you physically observed the property yourself in the surrounding neighborhood?
I did on a number of occasions.
And have you also reviewed the applicant's plans for proposed establishment at the property?
Yes, ma'am.
And does the application, in your opinion as an expert, meet those standards?
Yes, they do.
And we have submitted that report as a part of this application with your findings. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And if you were to continue to testify on this matter, would your testimony be the same or substantially the same as the information found in your report?
Yes, it would.
In your conclusions, have you determined that the proposal complies with all applicable standards of this zoning ordinance?
I did.
And additionally, you've determined that strict compliance with the regulations and standards of the zoning ordinance, ordinance, my apologies, would create practical difficulties or particular hardships for the subject property?
Right, this is in RS three district, but it's more of an institutional-type use than a residential use. So their requirements are different, but their accommodations for those requirements, I think, are are very, uh, appreciative of the sit- of the, uh, location and condition of it.
So as such, the requested variations are consistent with the stated purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
And the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only in accordance with the current standards of the zoning ordinance that it's undercurrent.
Right.
And that the variations of granted would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, correct?
No, it wouldn't. They, they, uh, uh, excuse me, daycare centers are expected to be located in residential neighborhoods more than anywhere else.
Thank you. Um, and that the particular physical surroundings, shape, or topographical condition of the specific property involved would result in a particular hardship upon the property owner as distinguished from a mere convenience here if the strict letter of the regulations were carried out. Would you agree with that?
I do.
And that the conditions upon which the petitions for variations are based would not be applicable generally to other property within the same zoning classifications?
That's correct.
And that the purpose of the variations is not based exclusively upon a desire to make more money out of the property?
Right.
Okay, so as Mr. Davis stated, it's, uh, to add much-needed childcare to the community, and that the alleged practical difficulty or particular hardship has not been created by any person presently having an interest in the property. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Also, that the granting of the variations will not be detrimental to public wel- welfare or injurious to other property or improvements in the neighborhood in which the property is located.
That's correct.
And finally, that the proposed variations will not impair an adequate supply of light and air to an adjacent property or substantially increase the congestion in the public streets or increase the danger of fire, public safety, or substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood.
That's correct. And any, uh, addition to the property as as following the existing building lines. So those are existing setbacks that's been requested, except for the fact of the, um, off-street parking and the trash enclosure.
Alrighty, thank you, Mr. Musawir.
Great. And 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 Counselor, just to get out, cuz some of those questions, I think, are more, um, appropriate for the architect. Can we get the name of the architect on record?
Mario Cruz.
Great. And and, okay, perfect. And going forward on these types of matters, I think the, uh, the architect is probably more important than the, uh, background than a the land consultant for a variation. Um, so with that, any other questions from the board? Okay, Mr. Davis, we'll take this under consideration, and we thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Have a good weekend.
You too, you too, enjoy.
Bye-bye.
Okay, everybody, let's do one more, and then let's take a little break. So we're going to calendar number four twenty-one dash twenty-one dash S. And I will go ahead and read, uh, this recommendation letter. While the client, um, gets situated. So for calendar number four twenty-one dash twenty-one dash S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed body art service tattoo shop.
I am present.
Thank you very much. Um, and do we have the Counselor on, who's Kevin Coyne?
We do. Kevin Coyne here.
Perfect. Counselor, go right ahead.
Sure, thank you. Again, uh, Kevin Coyne, attorney for applicant. I practice with the law firm Chouak in Texan, which is located at thirty South Wacker, Suite twenty-six hundred here in Chicago. Um, again, appearing on behalf of the applicant, who is seeking a special use to establish a body art service tattoo shop at the property located at fifty-five twenty-seven S South Ashland, again, in Chicago. I do have two witnesses here today. I have Tiffany Amaya, the principal operator and applicant, who completed the findings of fact for today's hearing. And I also have Joe Ryan, a, as our expert, a zoning consultant, practicing with the LaSalle Appraisal Group, and he'll testify as to his report and findings. Uh, would you like to swear them in now, uh, before I begin my summary?
Yeah, that'll work well. Um, so, uh, Tiffany, um, in Bustillo, so Amaya, um, which which last name do you prefer?
Uh, Amaya.
Okay, perfect. Um, Ms. Amaya, um, will you state your name and address, please?
Yeah, my name is Tiffany Amaya. My address for the location is five-five-two-seven South Ashland Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six-zero-six-three-six.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great. Um, and Joe Ryan, uh, will you please state your name and address?
Morning, Chair. Uh, Joseph Ryan, ninety-four fifty-five South Ashland, Ursulph, uh, Hoine Avenue in Chicago.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great. And Joe, we recognize your expertise.
Thank you, Chair.
Yep, with that, Counselor, um, go right ahead.
Uh, thank you, Chairman, and thank you to the board for, uh, hearing us today. Uh, Next Generation Tattoo Shop, uh, just to give you some background on the applicant, will be fully licensed and safely operated four-station tattoo shop that will employ up to six part-time employees. It will offer an inclusive and welcoming environment for its customers, and will allow them to provide an opportunity to express themselves through professionally and safely designed piercings and tattoo services. Hours of operation will be Monday through Saturday, ten AM to ten PM. Sundays, uh, the business will be open by appointment only. Um, with respect to the property itself, to provide a description, subject property is comprised of a rectangular-shaped B-three-two-zoned land parcel that is currently improved with a two-story mixed-use six, six thousand seven hundred and thirty square foot building. The site has a fifty-foot, uh, frontage on the east side of South Ashland Avenue. Um, the proposed use will occupy an existing and vacant retail unit located on the first floor of this building. The building conforms to the surrounding environments. There are numerous other mixed-use two-story buildings in the immediate area. And again, South Ashland Avenue is a commercial corridor, uh, Artel- Arterial Street with retail mixed-use commercial buildings on either side of the street, uh, and again, many of such buildings in the immediate area. To speak a little bit to the standards of our application, to satisfy the special use, um, relative to whether or not we're satisfying the standards needed to have a special use granted, you'll hear from our expert, uh, further in that our application, we believe, clearly does satisfy the uses, uh, uh, ne- necessary to achieve the special use, and once that special use is granted, the operation will be fully compliant, uh, with all applicable zoning standards. Um, the special use will be in the public interest and general welfare of the neighborhood. The use will be operated safely, again, adhered to all code and licenser requirements, and will be very compatible with neighboring commercial uses, including the operators. Again, the latest that will be open will be ten PM, which is very consistent with neighboring businesses. And, uh, we also point out that we are filling existing retail vacancy and creating employment opportunities through the business, which will not create any disruption, traffic, or noise. With respect to whether or not the use is compatible with surrounding area with respect to its site plan and building scale, again, we point to the fact that there are numerous two-story mixed-use buildings in the area. Um, the business itself will blend in perfectly in, uh, in in style and scale with the other neighboring businesses. And the signage will be very discreet. We're not using bright blinking signage. It's gonna be very subtle, nothing that should be disruptive to neighboring property owners or traffic, and again, the hours of operation compare. The operational characteristics of the business are also very compatible with the immediate neighborhood. Um, hours of operation are, we only have four stations in the business, three for tattooing, one for piercing, so there's gonna be a very modest number of max customers ever coming and going from the property. So there should be no impact on traffic or parking. We point out that, uh, our customer, our applicant, is very cognizant and highly value sanitation and, uh, wants to make sure that no neighbors are are ever disrupted, so we'll make sure that this operation is always operated co-compliantly, and again, we have all necessary licenses. Um, will the use to, uh, be designed to promote pedestrian safety?
Counselor, I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut you off, cuz I think, um, we should, you know, we have a good amount of this in the findings of fact. Um, so I I'd like to get to the witnesses, honestly.
Yeah, sure, that that's fine. I can do that. Um, I will call, uh, Joe Ryan of LaSalle Appraisal Group.
Here.
Hi, Mr. Ryan. Can you state your full name, uh, for the record?
Joseph Ryan, President, LaSalle Appraisal Group, with offices at ninety-four fifty-five South Hoine Avenue in Chicago.
And you are a licensed appraiser, is that correct?
I am.
And you've testified numerous times before the Chicago Zoning Board of Appeals in other cases, is that correct?
I have.
And you have visited the subject property that it's at issue in today's hearing?
Yes.
And did you prepare the zoning report, uh, that is dated August twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, with respect to the subject, uh, property at issue in today's hearing?
I did.
And if you were to testify fully today as to all of the findings and representations in that report, would your findings and testimony remain consistent with those findings, uh, as outlined in the before-mentioned zoning report?
Yes.
And in your opinion, as an expert, does the subject property satisfy all applicable zoning code requirements? Should today's special use be satisfied, be approved? And it's your, uh, uh, opinion as an expert that the special use standards have been satisfied by today's application?
Yes, they have.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. And if I may now call the principal for the applicant, Tiffany Amaya.
Present.
Hi Tiffany, can you state your full name for the record?
Tiffany Amaya.
And you completed the submissions on behalf of the applicant, including the findings of fact, which I show is being dated September seventh, two thousand twenty-one, which were included and presented to the zoning board today?
Yes.
And if you were to testify fully today as to all the representations outlined in those findings of fact and related submissions, would your testimony remain consistent with those statements?
Yes.
And are you fully licensed to provide tattoo and piercing services?
Yes.
Have you been trained to provide such services by working in other tattoo shops?
Yes.
And if, if today's special use approval were denied, is it correct to say that you would not be able to open up your new business?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much, Chairman. I have no further testimony or witnesses and are available for questions.
Okay, great. Yeah, so I think it'd be helpful if we maybe ask some questions of the applicant. So Ms. Amaya, one question I had on reviewing the finding of fact, ten PM is just a little bit later than we see tattoo special uses staying open until, I'm wondering if you could give some feedback on, on why you chose that time?
Because I've worked in previous tattoo shops before, and the tattoo shop that I did work at, there's a lot of clients that would prefer to come at a later time just because they get off work and they don't have time to come in the morning. So that's the reason why I would be having part-time. I would have somebody working in the morning and somebody working in the night to kind of meet our community needs for clients that want to come in later.
Okay. And is it that ten PM is the last appointment? Or the last appointment would only go until a maximum of ten PM?
Ten PM would be the maximum, nothing after ten PM.
Got it. Okay. And with the, can you tell us a little bit, of course, we've got, we've got photos. If you tell us a little bit about the surrounding area, there's, there's some residential around it, correct?
Yes, there is residential behind the area and also in front of it. And there's also other commercial use. There's a beauty salon right next to us where she does hair. And there's just other services. There's churches around us. We do have support for them. I have talked to them. I have talked to some of the neighbors and they also told me that I do have their support.
Great. Okay, any other questions from the board for Ms. Amaya?
This is Commissioner Esposito. Just maybe for clarification, Ms. Amaya, your affidavit said you plan on opening September fifteenth. Are you open now?
No, I am not open. I'm waiting to get the business license in order to be open, but I'm looking to open as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board for Ms. Amaya? Okay, thank you very much, everyone, for your time and we'll take this under consideration.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, everybody, as promised, let's call a quick recess. About around thirteen minutes, so let's go to eleven oh five AM. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
Thank you. And again, we'll reconvene at eleven oh five AM for the remainder of the meeting. Thanks, everybody. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a tandem drive-through and electronic menu boards to serve an existing Burger King fast food restaurant, provided that the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Tri-City Foods of Illinois LLC. And the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated July twentieth, twenty-twenty-one, prepared by Anchor CM, with landscape plan prepared by Anchor CM slash Terra Engineering LTD. And we have Mike Noonan on this matter, on this matter, I believe. So councillor, let us know when you're here.
Sure, I'm here and I am looking for the rest of my team. Well, I see them on here. They're just getting logged in, but I will go ahead and get started. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of board. My name is Mike Noonan. I'm with Foley and Lardner. Our offices are located at three twenty-one North Clark Street, Suite three thousand in Chicago. I represent the applicant, Tri-City Foods of Illinois. Here with me today are applicant representative Jason Berg, who is the Director of Construction and Facilities for Tri-City Foods of Illinois, the applicant. Urban Planner Jason Jarrett of Ocrent Kissel Associates. And also available for questions is Tracy Willey, Director of Design, Anchor Construction and Management. Mr. Chair, if you'd like to swear on our witnesses and we'll get going.
Great. Okay, so Jason Berg, will you please state your name and address?
Jason Berg, one-ten Tower Lane, Elk Grove Village, Illinois.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great. Jason Jarrett, will you state your name and address, please?
Yes, Jason Jarrett, office location is one-twenty-two South Michigan Avenue, Chicago, Illinois.
Thank you. Jason, will you remind me, are you, are you architect on this or land, land appraiser?
Certified planner.
Certified planner. Okay, great. Tracy Willey, will you please state your name and address?
Tracy Willey, one-one-nine-one Clearwater Drive, Yorkville, Illinois, six-zero-five-six-zero.
Thank you, Ms. Willey. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Great. And will you remind me, and apologies, but what your role in the project is?
I worked on the drawings and I worked with the architect of record on finishing and completing all the drawings and details.
Okay, great. And we, we recommend, or we recognize Jason Jarrett's expertise based off of past appearances.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mike, you missed that.
Thank you, the applicant Tri-City Foods of Illinois is here before you today seeking a special use to expand and modify an existing drive-through at sixty-three fifty South Cicero in Chicago. They've submitted this request with the permission of the landowners PLH SGH Investments LLC. The applicant here is proposing to expand the existing drive-through by converting this location into a tandem drive-through and updating the existing equipment to electronic menu boards. The footprint of this building will not be modified and the existing window will not be moved, but there will be plenty of cosmetic updates and improvements to the building facade and finishes, as well as extensive site and landscaping work to enhance the driving and pedestrian experience. As set forth in our findings of fact, this request meets the criteria and the zoning ordinance for approval of a special use for a drive-through restaurant and will have a positive impact on the surrounding area. And next, I would like to call our applicant, Jason Berg. Mr. Berg, please state your name, profession and business address.
Hi, my name is Jason Berg. I'm the Director of Construction and Facilities for Tri-City Foods of Illinois, the applicant, our offices are located at fourteen hundred Opus Place, Suite nine hundred, Downers Grove, Illinois.
Thank you, is it correct that you filed this application with the consent of the landowner PLH SGH Investments LLC?
Yes.
Is it also correct that as Director of Construction and Facilities of Tri-City Foods of Illinois, you have specific knowledge of the subject property and the proposed project?
Yes.
Am I correct that you have provided a signed witness affidavit in connection with this matter?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I provided this affidavit to the board along with the proposed findings of fact. Mr. Berg, if you were to continue to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with the statements in your affidavit?
Yes, it would.
Thank you, Mr. Berg, next, I'd like to call Jason Jarrett. Mr. Jarrett, please state your name, address and profession.
My name is Jason Jarrett, I'm a certified planner and senior associate with Oakrent Kissel Associates, the offices at one twenty-two South Michigan in Chicago.
And I know the, the board has already acknowledged your expertise. Were you, were you retained by the applicant to conduct an urban planning analysis of their special use application to expand the existing drive-through restaurant use by adding a tandem drive-through and electronic menu board located in a B three dash one community shopping district at the subject property?
Yes.
And have you prepared a report detailing your analysis, findings and conclusions, and is that report contained in the materials submitted to the board?
I have and it is.
And is it correct that if you were called to testify further, your testimony will be consistent with the findings and conclusions contained in your report, specifically that the proposed development is consistent with the general criteria for approval of special uses and will have minimal impact on the surrounding area?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Jarrett. At this time, we welcome any questions that the board might have regarding this matter.
Thanks, Counselor. Yeah, so I, just to confirm, can you let us know any ways where this, this upgrade, we'll call it renovation, would change the operations, I know it's already a dual lane. But I, am I correct, say it won't affect any like stacking or traffic?
That's correct, and it's, it's actually not a dual lane, it's a, it's an existing single lane, what we're doing is adding two menu boards so that two orders can be placed simultaneously, but it's the same lane.
Yep, thank you for the, thank you for that clarification. So no, no real effect on stacking potentially?
I'd like to refer that to Mr. Jarrett, our expert.
Yeah, no, there actually are no changes to stacking, there's a slight increase in the length of the landscape island along the west side of the building. But it doesn't really, that actually kind of increases stacking, but it's the same number of cars.
Great. Other questions from the board? Okay, Counselor, I think we're good on this one.
Thank you.
We've got what we need, so we'll take this under consideration and I thank everyone for your time.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, calendar number four twenty-three dash twenty-one dash S at fifty-four twenty-five South Pulaski. And I believe, I'll read the recommendation, but, oh, it is you again, Mike, I had not this name in the roster, but that makes sense, okay. Calendar number four twenty-three dash twenty-one dash S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to reconfigure and reestablish a drive-through facility to serve an existing Burger King fast food restaurant, provided that the special use is issued solely to the applicant Tri-City Foods of Illinois LLC. And the development is consistent with the design and layout of plans and drawings dated October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, prepared by Anchor CM with landscape plan prepared by Anchor CM Terra Engineering LTD.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's me again, Mike Noonan with Foley and Lardner, three twenty-one North Clark Street, Suite three thousand in Chicago. Here with the same applicant, Tri-City Foods of Illinois. Same folks as before, applicant representative Jason Berg, Urban Planner Jason Jarrett and Tracy Willey, Director of Design for Anchor Construction and Management, is available for questions. The applicant Tri-City Foods of Illinois is before you today seeking a special use to modify an existing drive-through at fifty-four twenty-five South Pulaski. They've submitted this request with permission of their landowner, Allstate BK Real Estate Holdings Limited. The applicant is proposing to modify the existing drive-through by converting the existing menu boards to electronic menu boards. The footprint of the building will not be modified and the existing window will not be moved, but there will be cosmetic updates and improvements to the facade finishes, as well as extensive site and landscaping work that will enhance the driving and pedestrian experience. Just to note, the applicant has worked extensively with DPD and C dot staff on modifications to its site plan for this location to improve turning radius, traffic movements, access, um, thank you to staff for working with us on this one. And as set forth in our findings of fact, this request meets the criteria in the zoning ordinance for approval of a special use for a drive-through restaurant and will have a positive impact on the surrounding area. I'd like to call Jason Berg with the applicant. Mr. Berg, please state your name, profession and business address.
My name is Jason Berg, I'm the Director of Construction and Facilities of Tri-City Foods of Illinois, the applicant, our offices are located at fourteen hundred Opus Place, Suite nine hundred, Downers Grove, Illinois.
And I'll state that for the record, Mr. Berg has been sworn in.
Thank you. Mr. Berg, is it correct that you filed this application with the consent of the landowner, Allstate BK Real Estate Holdings Limited?
Yes.
Is it also correct that as Director of Construction and Facilities of Tri-City Foods Illinois, you have specific knowledge of the subject property?
Yes, I do.
Is it correct that you provided a signed witness affidavit in connection with this matter?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I've provided this affidavit to the board along with the proposed findings of fact. Mr. Berg, if you were to continue to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with the statements in your affidavit?
Yes, it would.
Were there any changes made since we submitted your affidavit that have been reflected in a, that would need to be reflected in the record today?
There was, I'm sorry, except that in my original affidavit, we proposed twenty-two parking spaces. And I don't have the exact number in front of me, we have modified that number.
Yeah, we're gonna be doing it a little less.
To, I'm sorry, it's to fourteen parking spots.
Thank you, Mr. Berg. Next, I'd like to call Jason Jarrett.
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett, could you please state your name, address and profession?
I guess Jason Jarrett, certified planner with Oakrent Kissel Associates at one twenty-two South Michigan Avenue in Chicago, excuse me, one forty-one West Jackson, we moved this summer.
Thank you, Mr. Jarrett, and as the chair noted, you've been recognized as an expert and you've been sworn in, correct?
Yes.
Great. Mr. Jarrett, you were retained by the applicant to conduct an urban planning analysis of their special use application to modify an existing drive-through restaurant use in a B three dash one community shopping district at the subject property, is that correct?
That's correct.
And did you prepare a report detailing your analysis, findings and conclusions? And is that report contained in the materials submitted to the board?
Yeah, I did, and it is.
And is it correct that if you were called to testify further, your testimony would be consistent with the findings and conclusions contained in your report? Specifically, that the proposed development is consistent with the general criteria for approval of special uses and will have minimal impact on the surrounding area?
That's correct.
And, and Mr. Jarrett, as I made the board aware, the plans associated with the project have been revised after receiving input from DPD and C dot, have you reviewed these revised plans?
I have.
And do the changes made on behalf of DPD and C dot change the conclusions in your report?
They do not.
Thank you, Mr. Jarrett. And at this time, we welcome any questions that the board might have regarding this matter.
Great, so I do wanna get someone from the Department of Planning and Development on just to confirm on the record whether or not the reduction in parking affects the recommendation. So Nancy Radzovich, are you on?
I am.
Okay, great, so in summary, there's just a change to the application wherein the parking has been reduced from twenty-two to fourteen. So just wanting to confirm with you, noting that you are still on the record as being sworn in, whether that would change the department's recommendation?
No, we worked with them, and I don't know if Jeanette could switch back to the site plan, but we did work with them extensively on various iterations of this modification to the drive-through. Our, our goals were twofold, we wanted to ensure that there was safe circulation and access on the site. So this is, I believe, like our, or maybe our third iteration on this project. In consultation with the applicant, you know, the, the number of parking spaces exceeds what's required by ordinance. So, you know, this, this plan works and, and provides a safer access for the site.
Great. Okay, any questions from the board? All right, thank you, everyone, we'll take this under consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the board and to staff. Have a good, have a good rest of the day.
Yeah, thanks, Counselor.
Thank you.
The calendar number four twenty-four dash twenty-one dash S at twenty-eight eleven North, I can never say this street name, it's Narragansett.
Narragansett.
Yeah, it's one I read all the time and it's, yeah, thank you, thank you, Donna. We're doing a lot of food ones right around lunchtime. So with that, give me a second, I'll read the department's recommendation, we'll keep going. For calendar number four twenty-four dash twenty-one dash S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a one-lane drive-through facility to serve a proposed Wendy's restaurant in an existing one-story building, provided that the special use is issued solely to the applicant Wendy's Properties LLC. And the development is, is consistent with the design and layout of the site and landscape plans dated October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, prepared by Weaver Consultants Group and architectural plans dated July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and elevations dated October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, all prepared by Wallen Gomez Architects LTD. With that, Counselor, you can, you can begin.
Wonderful, thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, I've got a few, with Foley and Lardner, representing the applicant Wendy's Properties LLC. As you can see with me are Jeff Gilling, Construction Manager for Wendy's, and Jason Jarrett, Urban Planner with Oakrent Kissel Associates, who's our planning expert. Mr. Chairman, would you like them to be sworn in at this time?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, Donna, I can bring them each through swearing in and then we can just continue, so I believe first up is, is Jeff Giling, right?
Gilling, yes, uh-huh.
Gilling. Okay, Mr. Gilling, can you please state your name and address?
My name is Jeff Gilling, I'm a construction manager with the Wendy's Company. Our corporate address is one Dave Thomas Boulevard in Dublin, Ohio.
Thank you, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great. Okay, next, yep, go, go ahead, Counselor.
Okay, I was just gonna mention, there are two other people with us, they, they don't need to be sworn, but, but just in case there are questions, Bill Perry, Professional Engineer with Weaver Consultants Group, and Eric Lee with Brixton Capital, which is Wendy's landlord. Now, so we're here for a drive-through at an existing one-story building at twenty-eight eleven North Narragansett. The property was formerly a bank with six drive-through lanes. So the applicant's proposing to reuse the existing drive-through by reducing the current drive-through to one lane, so this is kind of the opposite of what you usually hear. They have submitted this request with permission of the landowner. Now, the footprint of the building will not be modified, the existing windows will not be moved, but there will be a significant cosmetic updates and improvements to the building facade and finishes, as well as extensive site work to enhance the driving and pedestrian experience. The applicant proposes to greatly increase landscaping, close out the alley access, provide outdoor seating and bike parking and make it much more of a pedestrian-friendly experience. Now, I do wanna mention that we did have a robust community meeting that had twenty-three people in the height of the pandemic, that was a pretty big turnout. Alderman Viegas did a great job in, on April thirteenth of rounding up a, a whole variety of, of neighbors and community stakeholders. The, the only objection that was raised was from the church to the east, which is the urban rock church at Brickyard and specifically Pastor Ruiz. His concern was that their buses currently go through the bank property, especially with it being vacant, in order to cross the alley and get into his parking lot. And besides the, the bus, it was concerned that it wouldn't be able to get in through the alley. Sure enough, we checked it out and he was right. Even though, you know, he was going through our Wendy's property, it was true that with our layout, that he would not be able to get his bus in his parking lot. So the landlord has graciously stepped forward, agreed to get a whole new gate and fence at his expense, and this has greatly met the approval of Pastor Ruiz, who's graciously given us a lot of support and very happy about the resolution. And we have provided that to the zoning board, Mr. Chairman. The only other thing I wanna say is the applicant has worked extensively, and I mean extensively, as, as Nancy indicates on the two prior matters, that, that very robust dialogue with C dot about the whole layout. It's mutually agreed in a layout that will ensure safe and efficient queuing, access, pedestrian access, et cetera, everyone was very satisfied with the result. Now, I'd like to call Jeff Gilling with Wendy's, the applicant. So he needs to unmute. Very good, Mr. Mr. Gilling, is it correct that you filed this application with the consent of the landowner?
Yes.
And is it correct that as the construction manager, you have specific knowledge of the subject property and the project?
Yes, I do.
Great, and is it correct you provided a signed witness affidavit in connection with the matter?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Chairman, I've provided that affidavit to the board along with the findings. Mr. Gilling, if you were to continue to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with the statements in your affidavit?
Yes, it would.
Thank you, Mr. Gilling, and next, I'm going to call Jason Jarrett. And Mr. Chairman, I know he was recognized as an expert in the two prior cases, may we have the same recognition here?
Yeah, Mr. Jarrett is both sworn in and recognized as an expert.
Wonderful. Okay, split ahead then. Mr. Jarrett, is it correct that you were retained by Wendy's to conduct an urban planning analysis of their special use to establish a drive-through facility in connection with the restaurant use at, in an existing commercial building at the subject property?
Yes, that's correct.
Mr. Jarrett, have you prepared a report detailing your analysis, findings and conclusions? And is that report contained in the materials submitted to the board and admitted into evidence?
I have and it is.
And that includes also the revised plans that were requested by C dot, correct?
Yes, I've reviewed those as well.
Thank you, finally, is it correct that if you were called to testify further, your testimony would be consistent with the findings and conclusions contained in your report? Specifically, that the proposed development is consistent with the general criteria for approval of special uses and will have minimum impact on the surrounding area?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jarrett, Mr. Chairman, we're available for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Counselor. Any questions from the board on this matter? Okay, I hear none, so we'll take this under consideration.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, everyone, for your time today. Enjoy the weekend.
You as well. Thank you.
Calendar number four twenty-five dash twenty-one dash S. We've got Alvin Charity as Counselor on this one. So Alvin, as you get situated, I'll go ahead and read the department's recommendation. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a dual-lane drive-through to serve an existing McDonald's restaurant, provided that the special use is issued solely to the applicant McDonald's Corporation. And the development is consistent with the design and layout of the site and landscape plans dated October thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, with truck turning plan dated October twelfth, twenty twenty-one, prepared by Watermark Engineering Resources, LTD, and elevations dated May twelfth, twenty twenty-one, prepared by Lingual Design Group, Inc.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Alvin Charity of Charity and Associates, PC, twenty North Clark Street, Suite three hundred. And I represent the applicant McDonald's Corporation with respect to the application for a special use to permit permit the conversion of a single-lane drive-through serving the existing McDonald's restaurant at ninety-two eleven to thirteen South Commercial Avenue to a dual-lane drive-through. Present to testify on behalf of the applicant are Christopher Step, Area Construction Manager, U.S. Restaurant Development for McDonald's Corporation, and Terrence O'Brien, Licensed MAI Real Estate Appraiser. At this time, I'd like to call my first witness, Christopher Step, to be sworn in.
Yep, thank you, Counselor. Mr. Step, so when you are unmuted, I see you are. Can you state your name and address, please?
Chris Step. My MHQ is at one ten North Carpenter Street, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six zero seven.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Step, how long have you been employed by McDonald's Corporation?
Since two thousand thirteen.
And you are experienced in the development and operation of drive-through drive-through restaurants, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you are familiar with the McDonald's restaurant at ninety-two eleven to thirteen South Commercial Avenue? The drawings for the proposed improvements in the area surrounding the subject restaurant, is that correct?
I am, yes.
And the applicant is the owner of the subject zoning lot, is that correct?
Correct.
And the applicant has made certain revisions to its plans with the proposed improvements to the existing McDonald's restaurant to address certain matters raised by the Bureau of Zoning of the City of Chicago Department of Planning and Development, is that correct?
We have, yes.
And you have submitted a signed affidavit with the findings of fact in advance of your testimony, is that correct?
Correct.
And would your testimony before this body be consistent with the statements in your affidavit?
Yes.
At this time, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask if there are any questions of this witness?
Any questions from the board for Mr. Step?
This is Commissioner Sanchez, and maybe we're going to get to it later down the road. But my interest is in the stacking of of the drive-through and and how the plans are going to accommodate the stacking.
Sure. So currently, our order point is on the the rear of the building. I believe that would be on the the east side. We're going to pull it to thirty-five feet to the south side of the building, which will allow better stacking between the order point to the the cash window, the pay window, and then to the pickup. So what that does, it allows the kitchen to keep up with the orders being placed. So rather than a single order point taking one order at a time in one line of cars, we can actually take two two orders simultaneously. They would both proceed. And from that point forward, if you can see on the drawing, we've got, I believe, seven stacked cars from the order point to the first cash window. Currently, I think we are at five cars.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board at this time? Okay, Counselor, you can carry on.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I'd like to call my second witness, Terrence O'Brien.
Yes, I'm here.
Great. Mr. O'Brien, can you please state your name and address?
Terrence M. O'Brien, O. class of B, R. I. E. N., Maintain Offices at seventy-three eighty-three North Lincoln Avenue, Lincolnwood, Illinois.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. And, Mr. O'Brien, we recognize your expertise based off of many, many past experiences or appearances.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, Mr. O'Brien, you have submitted your report in connection with this matter as part of the findings of fact, is that correct?
Yes.
And in connection with the preparation of your port your report, have you inspected the McDonald's restaurant at ninety-two eleven to thirteen South Commercial Avenue? The drawings for the proposed improvements to the restaurant and the area surrounding the site?
Yes, I physically inspected the subject and surrounding area on July third, twenty twenty-one. I've also reviewed the various drawings prepared by McDonald's Corporation. So I'm quite familiar with the proposed development, the redevelopment, as well as the subject area.
And does your report submit it with the proposed findings of fact set forth your analysis for the conclusions supporting the requested special use?
Yes, sir, it does. I have addressed the various criteria set forth within the zoning ordinance pertaining to what needs to be addressed for special uses. And my professional opinion, the proposed special use does fulfill all that criteria. I would also emphasize that not only the subject property has a drive-through facility, but within a one-block radius, there's three other drive-through facilities. And within the one-and-a-half-mile radius, there's an addition, there's ten drive-through facilities.
And then, in your professional opinion, if the requested special use is granted, will the subject zoning lot, as improved, comply with all applicable standards of the Chicago zoning ordinance?
Yes, it would.
And in your professional opinion, will the proposed improvements be in the interest of the public convenience and not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood or community?
Yes, the subject is a well-established McDonald's. As far as the public convenience goes, it'll speed up the ordering and fulfilling of orders for various patrons. Also, there was a question earlier. Actually, with a dual lane, you're going to increase the amount of stacking space available for prospective purchasers of McDonald's.
And in your professional opinion, are the proposed improvements compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of site planning, building scale, project design, and operating characteristics?
Yes, yes, the subject structure is a single-story. There will not be any substantial alterations to that. There are multi-story buildings in the subject area. I would point out that all of the abutting properties to the east, west, north, and south are all zoned for business purposes. And again, I'd point out that within one block of the subject, there are at least three other drive-through facilities. One is located immediately to the south, where there's, I believe, the Bank of America facility. There's also one across the street, Royal Bank, and one down the street, Walgreens.
And finally, in your professional opinion, are the proposed improvements designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort?
Yes, I don't see any additional interaction between traffic generated from the vehicles and pedestrians. They're going to use the existing two curb cuts.
All right, thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our presentation. I'd just like to note for the record that we have submitted a letter from Alderman Susan Setlowski Garza of the Tenth Ward, in which she expressed her support for the application.
Thank you, Counselor. Yep, and we've reviewed the letter from Alderman person Garza. So any other questions from the board? Okay, I think we we have what we need here. So thank you very much, everyone, for your time, and we'll take this under consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Thank you.
Okay, we are going to now move from food to cannabis. So let's go to calendar numbers four twenty-six dash twenty-one dash S and four twenty-seven dash twenty-one dash S.
My name is John George. I'm an attorney with offices at seventy-one South Wacker with the law firm of April and L.L.P. I'm a period of staff this morning on behalf of the applicant, which is Medmar Lakeview LLC. In connection with two special use applications that we filed for the property of thirty-five twenty-four North Clark Street. President this morning with with me, following people, Mr. Charles Bakhtal, who is the chief executive officer of the applicant, and Mr. William Butler, who is the senior vice president of retail operations for the applicant. Mr. Abraham Jamal, who is the director of security for the applicant. Mr. Shama Enya, who is the executive vice president of social equity and education development for the applicant. Ty Duncan, Vice President of Community Integration for the applicant. And we also have Brett Knoll, who's the real estate appraiser. Mr. Lamar Johnson, who's the architect for Lamar Johnson Collaborative, Inc. Jack Titelman, who's the security consultant from Titan, the Titan Group, and Susan Decker, who's a capacity analyst from Integrated Insight. I don't know, Mr. Chairman, if you want to swear all these witnesses now at this point in time?
Yep, that's quite the roster, Counselor. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to read the department's recommendations first. And then maybe I go down the line and swear everyone in. I want to note for you, we've kind of got, I heard what you said, but we have bad acoustics. It's a little bit muffled coming from your mic. So when I read these recommendations, maybe you can clear that up a little bit.
Okay, do you hear me any better now?
It's still a little bit muffled. We can we can hear you better, but let me read the department's recommendations and we'll get back to it. So for calendar number four twenty-six dash twenty-one dash S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to relocate an existing co-located medical cannabis dispensary slash adult-use cannabis dispensary in an existing commercial building, provided that, number one, the special use is issued solely to the applicant Medmar Lakeview LLC. Number two, the development is consistent with design and layout of the plans and drawings dated April ninth, twenty twenty, all prepared by Clayco Ventures, Inc. Slash LJC slash Woolpert slash RTM Engineering slash Illuminart. Number three, the applicant surrenders and abandons its medical cannabis dispensary special use at thirty-one eighty-two North Clark Street, the twenty fifteen special use, upon commencement of the special use, and that the twenty fifteen special use shall be null and void and of no further force and effect. Number four, in the event that the applicant does not abandon and surrender the twenty fifteen special use upon commencement of this special use, both the twenty fifteen special use and the special use shall be null and void and of no further force and effect. And number five, the special use shall concurrently operate a medical cannabis dispensary and an adult-use cannabis dispensary, and that any separation of the medical cannabis dispensary and the adult-use dispensary shall render the special use null and void and of no further force and effect. Bear with me one more time. Calendar number four twenty-seven dash twenty-one dash S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to relocate an existing co-located adult-use cannabis dispensary, medical cannabis dispensary, in an existing commercial building, provided that, number one, the special use is issued solely to the applicant Medmar Lakeview LLC. Number two, the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated April ninth, twenty twenty, all prepared by Clayco Ventures, Inc. LJC, Woolpert, RTM Engineering, Illuminart. Number three, the applicant surrenders and abandons its medical cannabis dispensary special use at thirty-one eighty-two North Clark Street, the twenty fifteen special use, upon commencement of the special use, and and that this twenty fifteen special use shall be null and void and of no further force and effect. Number four, in the event that the applicant does not abandon and surrender the twenty fifteen special use upon commencement of the special use, both the twenty fifteen special use and the special use shall be null and void and of no further force and effect. And finally, number five, the special use shall concurrently operate an adult-use cannabis dispensary and a medical cannabis dispensary, and that any separation of the adult-use cannabis dispensary and medical cannabis dispensary shall render the special use null and void and of no further force and effect. With that, Counselor, still sound good with you that I go down the list and get everyone sworn in?
Yes, please.
Great, thank you. So first on my list is Charles Bakhtal. Charles, if you could please state your name and address and, again, tell us your role, that would be helpful.
Sure, Charles Bakhtal. Address, office address is four hundred West Erie, Suite three hundred in Chicago, Illinois. And I am a co-founder and chief executive officer of Cresco Labs.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great, thanks, Mr. Bakhtal. William Butler, can you state your name and address?
Yes, William Butler, four hundred West Erie Street, Suite one ten, Chicago, Illinois.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
And remind us of your role?
I'm the senior vice president of retail for Sunnyside for Cresco Labs.
Great, okay, thank you. Ty Duncan, can you please state your name and address?
Yes, my name is Ty Duncan. My office is at four hundred West Erie, Suite one ten, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six five four. I'm the vice president of community integration at Cresco Labs.
Thank you very much. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Chima Nia, will you please state your name and address?
Yes, Shemobi Enya. Address, four hundred West Erie Street, Suite one ten, Chicago, Illinois. I'm the executive vice president for social equity and educational development.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceeding?
Yes.
Great. Abraham Jamal, will you please state your name and address?
Yes, Abraham Jamal. It's four hundred West Erie, Suite one ten.
Great. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
And what's your role?
I am the director of security for Cresco Labs.
Great, thank you. Greg Knoll, can you please state your name and address? I see Greg Knoll on. Greg, you might be unmute.
Sorry about that. How about now?
There we go. We got you. Can you state your name and address, please?
Sure, Greg Knoll, one one four six Terrace Lane, Glenview, Illinois. I'm a certified general appraiser with an MAI designation.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceeding?
I do.
Great. And we we have your we have your report and we recognize your expertise.
Great.
Lamar Johnson, can you please state your name and address?
Yes, Lamar Johnson, thirty-five East Wacker Drive, Suite fifteen hundred, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six oh one.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
What's your role, Mr. Mr. Johnson?
I'm the architect for Cresco.
Great, okay. Jack Titelman, will you please state your name and address?
Jack Titelman, twenty-six Wilkes-Shire Boulevard, Randolph, New Jersey, zero seven eight six nine. I'm the president and CEO of the Titan Group.
Great. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And and we'll probably get to this, but what's the Titan Titan Group's role?
We are a consulting firm and we're shoulder-to-shoulder with leaders in business community and ensure safe and effective management of their controlled substance drug inventory.
Thank you. Susan Decker, will you please state your name and address?
Sure, Susan Decker, Vice President at Integrated Insight with address of two four six five McClain Lane, The Villages, Florida.
Great. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
And remind me, you said you're with Integrative Insight?
Yes.
What's what's the role of Integrative Insight?
Yes, so we are an analytics consulting company. We were founded by former Disney executives. So most of our clients are travel and leisure, but we also do hotels, transportation, government, et cetera.
Counselor, did I did I get everyone?
You 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 have everyone, sure, sure.
Okay, great. With that, you can carry forward.
The subject property is owned C two dash two and is currently approved of an existing commercial building that is vacant, which is on the screen right now. In accordance with the City of Chicago ordinances that regulate medical medical and adult-use cannabis dispensaries, what we're seeking are two special uses, one for the medical cannabis dispensary and the other for an adult-use cannabis dispensary to operate as a co-located medical and adult-use
as a co-located medical and adult use cannabis dispensary at the subject site of thirty five twenty four. For reference, the applicant currently operates a medical and adult use cannabis dispensary at thirty eight twelve North Clark, which is three blocks away, and that has been open since two thousand seventeen as a medical cannabis dispensary, and since two thousand, since January one of two thousand twenty, that is operated as a medical and adult use cannabis dispensary under an early approval adult use dispensary license that was issued by the State of Illinois. This location has operated successfully in the community since it's originally opened, and if approved by the Z B A today, the applicant is proposing to close the operation at thirty eight twelve North Clark and move all operations from that location three blocks south to thirty five twenty four North Clark. And this is the space that we're looking at on the monitor right now. The subject property is as indicated here is a two-story brick building and this and it's currently vacant. The photos of it are up on the screen and also part of our exhibit book. There are no residential uses or dwelling units in the building and no residential uses are proposed. In September of two thousand nineteen, this board granted the applicant a special use for a medical dispensary to operate at the subject property thirty five twenty four. However, at the time, the State of Illinois did not have a mechanism in place for dispensary operators to move locations, so the applicant did not move the locations or begin operating at thirty five twenty four in accordance with the resolution that the board issued, this board issued in two thousand nineteen. In July of this year, Governor Pritzker signed an amendment to the Cannabis Regulation Act and specifically allows for the relocation of early approval adult dispensary licenses so long as the new location is within the same geographic region as the original site, which is what we have before you today. As a result, the applicant is now before you again today seeking another medical special use, since they are not able to use the original medical special use in a timely fashion. The applicant is also now seeking an adult special use for the subject property, since now the state regulation allows their existing co-located dispensaries to move locations and for both a medical and adult use dispensary to seek a special use, which we've done here. Please note, when this board granted the medical dispensary special use, it included a condition that if the applicant were to ever seek an adult dispensary license use at this property, it would, we would return to this board and seek a special use to do so, and that's what we're doing today. Subsequent to the issuance of the resolution, the City of Chicago passed an ordinance that required all cannabis dispensaries, both medical and adult use, to seek a special use. And so for all those reasons, the applicant is here today requesting another medical special use in addition to an adult use special use to operate a co-located medical and adult use cannabis dispensary at the subject, subject property of thirty five twenty four North Clark. Before getting into the testimony of the witnesses, I just want to set forth a couple of basic facts. As I've indicated, we have submitted a floor plan and layout contained in the floor plan, which will all be in compliance with the city building and zoning codes and 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 state of Illinois. In our exhibit book, the that's identified as exhibit B in our exhibit book. The applicant proposes to operate the dispensary from nine in the morning until ten at night, seven days a week. The applicant will comply with all laws and ordinances as regulated by both the City of Chicago and the State of Illinois, required for the operation of a co-located medical and adult use cannabis dispensary, including all safety and security regulations. Safety and security where the site will exceed the requirements of the City of Chicago and the State of Illinois and are of the foremost importance to us as operators of this. We have submitted a letter from the zoning administrator of the City of Chicago stating that the property is located in the C two dash two district, which requires special use approval, and also that there are no existing schools within five hundred feet of the site. We've also submitted an affidavit with various exhibits demonstrating the applicant has contacted the Illinois State Board of Education and has separately reviewed the area surrounding the property and that there are no existing schools within five hundred feet of the site. The applicant held a community meeting on September the twenty seventh of this year, two thousand twenty one, at the subject site, as well as having a link for access to the community virtually, and all the required notice was provided two weeks prior in advance of that community meeting, which is required. And the applicant has submitted an affidavit with various exhibits demonstrating compliance with the ordinance for notice of the community meeting. Please note, as this proposed location has been an ongoing consideration for some time, we've had multiple meetings over the last year and a half regarding this project, including another general community, as I just indicated on April the five, two thousand twenty, as well as multiple meetings with Alderman Tony and multiple meetings with various community groups, such as the Hawthorne Neighbors Association and Alderman Tony. Alderman, we believe that the special use for the medical cannabis dispensary and the adult use cannabis dispensary are in the interest of the public convenience and will serve the purposes acknowledged by the City of Chicago and the State of Illinois with their passing of ordinances and statutes allowing for medical and adult use cannabis sales, recognizing that the sale of medical and adult use cannabis is in the interest of allowing enforcement to focus on violent and property crimes, generating revenue for education, substance abuse prevention and treatment, and freeing resources to invest in communities and other public purposes. We have submitted affidavits, together with our findings of fact for the various individuals who I have just been sworn in a few months ago. We've also submitted a real estate appraisal report from Mr. Knoll, together with his credentials, a D E A inspection report that has been submitted by Mr. Jack Titelman, and a capacity analyst that was prepared and submitted by Ms. Decker. We have prepared for you use an exhibit book, which you should have, that includes all of the following, photographs of the site, which are exhibit D, customer flow plans, floor plans on exhibit B, interior renderings are exhibit C, letter of support from the Hawthorne Neighbors, which is exhibit F, letter of support from East Lakeview Chamber of Commerce, which is exhibit E, and a letter of no objection from Alderman Tony, which is exhibit D. That includes my opening statement, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I would like now to begin questioning the witnesses, and my first witness is Mr. Charles Bachtel. I will go through and ask him some questions if that's the process that you want me to follow, Mr. Chairman.
If that's, that's great, thanks, counselor.
Thank you, okay. Mr. Bachtel, would you please state your full name and address?
Uh, yes, it's Charles Bachtel. Again, office address, four hundred West Erie, Suite three hundred, Chicago.
And you've just been sworn in, is that correct?
Correct.
Before we get into the specifics about the property, can you provide to the board some background on your company and the application which is pending before the board today?
Of course, Cresco Labs is a Chicago-based cannabis company, now with operations in ten states. Within the state of Illinois, we operate three cultivation facilities and ten retail dispensaries. We are here today to discuss moving our existing retail store on the thirty eight hundred block of Clark to a new store on thirty five hundred block of Clark, about twenty two hundred feet down the street, to accommodate patients and customers and create additional good paying jobs. Proven track record, a great work with the relationships in in local community, police department, and the aldermen, who are all excited to see us evolve our compliance-focused operations to a more appropriately sized location.
You're familiar, Mr. Bachtel, with both of the applications for special uses that have been filed with respect to thirty five twenty four North Clark, is that correct?
Correct.
Can you describe the ownership structure for the, of the applicant, please?
We are a publicly traded organization on the Canadian Securities Exchange and, you know, give or take approximately a hundred thousand unique shareholders.
And is your company located in here in the state of Illinois as well as in other jurisdictions around the country?
We are, we are, we're headquartered, our office is is located at the address in in River North, and we we have operations in nine other states across the country.
Can you tell me, can you tell me what those other nine jurisdictions would be, please?
Sure. In addition to Illinois, we have Michigan, Ohio, Pennsylvania, New York, Massachusetts, Florida, Maryland, California, and Arizona.
And how many people are employed by Cresco in the state of Illinois and in the City of Chicago?
We have approximately thirteen hundred employees through the state of Illinois, and just shy of five hundred employees work in the City of Chicago.
Can you tell me, what are the economic impacts of the proposed applications that are pending before the board?
You, you know, we, rough numbers on on sort of the the accretive nature of allowing us to expand the operations, but we estimate that the state would have, would receive an estimated four point six million dollars of additional tax revenue in two thousand twenty two than it would receive from our current location in the calendar year here of twenty one.
Is your company also involved in the cultivation of cannabis as well as the distribution of it through various different types of dispensaries?
Yes, we are.
Can you tell the board a little bit about the existing location of thirty eight twelve North Clark, which is presently being operated by the applicant? How long has that been in in operation and exactly how has been that, how has that been operated?
Certainly, that that location opened in January of two thousand seventeen. It's a relatively small location, it was, it was suitable for the early days of the Illinois Medical Program, but it is, it is insufficient space for the current market. We've needed to assume another storefront actually on the east side of Clark Street to be able to manage customer flow, requires customers to check in at that location on the east side of Clark Street and then cross Clark Street to pick up their orders at the dispensary on the west side of the street. And currently, approximately fifty-ish employees at the current location, where we would anticipate in excess of 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 another sixty employees that would 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 be a part of the new location on Clark Street.
Can you describe the impact on the community that this facility has had?
No, they did the facility, the, the, the operation has been been a a great part of the community, both again during the the medical phase and also the dual purpose use, including adult use since the beginning of of two thousand, of twenty twenty, sorry. In addition to providing relief for over seventy five hundred medical cannabis patients annually, the store does employ fifty, just over fifty employees from the community, has contributed significant local and state tax dollars, and helped draw a vast number of consumers to that direct area that of course spend money on on transit, food, coffee, et cetera, during baseball season and through the rest of the year.
And what is the intended use of the current property of thirty eight twelve North Clark if you were to be granted approvals to move to the proposed location of thirty five twenty four, which is the application and spending before the board?
Sure, you know, you know, of course, in accordance with the recommendations of the departments that the the chairman had read at the beginning, which would require the special use that currently exists, that location to go away. So from an operational standpoint, that that location would no longer participate in the, in the cannabis industry. We are going to continue to use that space for a pretty exciting social equity focused training center, which would be titled the Illinois Cannabis Education Center. The center will provide both classroom-style seminars and very practical hands-on training for specifically geared towards the social equity licensees. As they move forward with their operations, we recognize the need for an inclusive incubator facility that could host these types of very innovative educational programming, not only for the social equity applicants, but for students around the city that are interested in learning more about the industry and how they can find a role for it. So it'll be the first ever real-life experienced cannabis training facility in the state. Of course, again, not operating within the industry, of course, no, no, no product or active ingredients would be on site, but it it does give that that opportunity for real hands-on training in a, in a real dispensary-type environment, which is definitely needed for for new entrepreneurs getting into the space and also, you know, future, future workforce that's, that's hoping to learn about the industry and become a part of it. We've, we have relationships and partnered with City of Chicago, City Colleges of Chicago, Chicago State, Roosevelt University, and Columbia College to conduct collaborative trainings at the site if it were to be approved. And those trainings will cover everything from Cannabis One Oh One compliance, operations, and customer care curriculum.
I am correct, then, what you just said is, will this be the first of this kind in the state of Illinois, this type of a program?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, going concerning a thirty eight twelve North Clark, have you had any criminal incidents or been cited by the City of Chicago with any violations at the location at all since the time it's been opened up in two thousand seventeen?
Have not.
And have you received letters of support from Alderman Tony, the Hawthorne Neighbors Association, East Lakeview Chamber of Commerce regarding the operation of our program of the thirty eight twelve?
Yes.
Do those also refer to what, what the proposed location of thirty five twenty four?
Yes.
Are you familiar with the parcel of property which is the subject matter you indicated? Yes, you also have indicated how it's improved, and you indicated that you're familiar with the applications that are pending. Let me ask you, will cannabis be consumed at all on this property?
No.
Is, is the property, the proposed co-located medical and adult use cannabis dispensary in the interest of the public convenience so as not to have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood? And if your answer is yes, could you explain to me a little bit as to why you believe that?
Uh, yes, this is, this is a retail store, and it'll be run as any other retail operation will be, especially one that's participating in a highly regulated industry, so it'll be compliant, professional, in a very secure environment. We believe the dispensary will add value to the neighborhood. For example, it'll have twenty-four seven security cameras and security officers on site, which will improve security in the neighborhood and also assist with deterring other crime in the surrounding areas. We've worked closely with the nineteenth district police and the alderman's office to ensure that we're not only providing a great service, but are also being strong community partners. So, you know, very, very excited about the opportunity to further the relationship that we have with the community.
And this proposed location at thirty five twenty four, is that, is that compatible with the character of the neighborhood in terms of site planning and building scale and noise and design, normal things that carry out in the business district?
Yes, we're only modifying the interior of the building, and all interior modifications will remain consistent with the surrounding commercial neighborhood. And, you know, the, the surrounding subject property contains many retail establishments, taverns, restaurants, hotels, other mixed-use developments, and our operations are similar to, you know, pharmacy or other retailer, commercial business operating in the neighborhood, and, you know, arguably certainly less intense than many of the surrounding tavern and restaurant uses.
And with the layout of the building and based on your testimony, is the proposed building and use designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort the way it's been laid out and the way it's being operated?
Yes, and and much more so than the current location that we have in the thirty eight hundred block of Clark, as I mentioned earlier, that requires that we have an actual staging area on the east side of Clark Street that that all customers and patients have to, have to come to before they can then cross Clark Street and go over to the dispensary to pick up their order. So then the new property, the subject property eliminates the risk to customers and pedestrians, and then, of course, all loading and unloading of of materials will happen from the alley that's adjacent to the building, and the exterior of the building will be well lit and sir, a video surveillance, as previously mentioned, and and our staff will ensure no loitering occurs outside of the building as well.
Will the proposed use be in compliance with the all standards of the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
And will it be in strict compliance with all of the other regulations of the City of Chicago and the State of Illinois?
Yes.
I have no further questions of this witness, Mr. Chairman and member of the board. I don't know if you have any questions of Mr. Bachtel, otherwise I'll move on to my other witness.
Any questions from the board right now for Mr. Bachtel?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, you brought up security and you said it will be safer for the community, obviously, um, you know, it's a big hospitality area with a lot of traffic. Could you go a little bit deeper on what you meant on security and it would be safer for the neighborhood?
He can answer that question, we have a specific, one of our specific witnesses will go into that, Mr. Troya, but.
Okay, well, this gentleman brought it up, that's why I asked the question.
No problem, go ahead if you want.
Sure, sure, certainly, Commissioner, and thanks for the question. You, you know, this is the, the opportunity to have another business on that street in that area that has these additional security cameras, security guards, well lit, further enhances the security environment of of the general area, and and not to, not to broaden the scope of this further, but there's studies out there that show in the immediate surrounding areas of these regulated dispensaries that you do see a benefit from their, from their, not only positioning, but from the security that they provide to the neighbors and the surrounding area as well.
And how many securities will you have on? You said it's twenty-four seven, let's look at my notes here.
Yes, I, I would defer to the subject matter expert on that, a who will, who will be addressed in a, in a bit.
All right, I, because like I said, you brought it up, so that's why if you didn't bring it up, I would wait for your security expert to ask these questions, so, but I'll ask him those questions when he, or he or she, I don't know. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. The next witness that I would like to call is Mr. William Butler. Mr. Butler?
I'll I'll note that, you know, board members feel free to shoot out questions at any point in time, but of course, we will be circling back.
Mr. Butler, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, please state your full name and address, please.
It's William Butler, four hundred West Erie, Chicago, Illinois.
And you've previously been sworn in this in this matter, is that correct?
Correct.
Are you familiar with the parcel of property which is the subject matter of this hearing, namely thirty-five twenty-four North Clark?
Yes.
And are you familiar with the applications that are pending before this board today for the adult-use dispensary license and special use and also a medical dispensary license special use?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have, do you have, meaning the company, do you have standard operating procedures that you have developed and and oversee for other cannabis dispensaries that have been operated by your company?
Yes.
Can you describe to the board what those operating procedures are?
Sure, we have intense standard operational procedures that that crisscross multiple areas of the store. Tied to our all, every one of our team members working within the dispensary. The key ways to start to break it down is tied to compliance, making sure that we're following all regulations tied to operating with the product that we're selling. There's also general in-store operational aspects, SOPs tied to how do we operate with cash in the store, how we operate with line flows in the stores in partnership with our security teams within the buildings. Each step along our customer journey within the store has these set operational procedures. We also have other SOPs that are tied to how we check in any product that's coming into the store, how we operate our our point-of-sale systems, and then how product is passed from our back-of-house security area and then to our customers as well.
Will the will the co-located medical and adult-use dispensary at thirty-five twenty-four North Clark be operated in accordance with these operating procedures that you discussed?
Yes.
Can you please describe to the board a typical customer's experience once they enter into our our location?
Sure, more than happy to. It actually starts before a customer enters the store where if they choose to shop on sunnyside.shop before they enter our location, or they choose to shop once they're actually arriving at our store. When any customer at first enters our building, they're within a secured vestibule. At that point in time is when we're checking for identification and making sure that anyone entering the building beyond that vestibule is twenty-one years of age or older. At that check-in process, they're then triggered to one of two processes once they're in the store. There is, if you can see on the screen here, they're directed once they're inside to go to what we call an OBO area, which is on behalf of. That means I have not purchased, I have not placed an order online ahead of time. And I'm there to, then we have our wellness advisors that are in those particular locations that will then take you through any customer through the options that are available in our in our on our menu. If they have made a purchase ahead of time and secured their order online, they're then directed to our checkout stations here in which you see the queuing stations on the screen. As we as we think about that online check-in proper, the online purchase process, it should be noted that no payment at that time is secured. No payment is processed until you're actually in the location. So really think of it as like a reservation system. And so if I've made that purchase ahead of time, I'm reserving it, and once I'm inside, that's when we'll actually process your transaction. If I was at the OBO station and I had a team member that was there to help me choose what I what I'm what I'm looking to purchase, once I've secured my item, again, it goes to our reservation system, and then that customer then goes to our checkout line. At the checkout station, there'll be one of twenty-four POS stations, point-of-sale stations. At those stations, that's when we will, the order will be presented to our customer for the very first time. We will go over the order one additional time with them, making sure it's everything that they were that they expected to be purchasing. We then process either cash or debit cards only. At that time, it's then put into a into a bag, shopping bag, and then the customer then exits the building. Two other key aspects to note is that at no point in the store is product visible. You may see packaging that's visible, so it helps us as we start to describe product and even just branding tied to particular brands we sell within our stores. And then the other key aspect is the separated entrance from exit. This helps us with our customer journey so that we are not crisscrossing, especially at our peak times in the store.
What's the employee count for the store? How does that work?
Sure, we're projecting to have over seventy team members working within this location, and it's a a mix of leadership team that's within our store and then our and then what we call our everyday team members as our wellness advisors within our store.
Does the, is there any flexibility in terms of the number of employees based upon different circumstances?
Absolutely. In fact, it's one of the things that we 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 really pride ourselves in as we think about the ebbs and flows of any of our locations. And where we can see peak times at one location, perhaps on a Friday afternoon versus other stores that may be very busy on a Saturday. And so we do have flex as we as we go through our scheduling with our, you know, seventy-plus team members at this particular location. It is a mix of part-time team members and full-time team members within the store. We also schedule around events that will take place within the neighborhood as well. If there are baseball games that are going on or concerts taking place at the stadium, we are able to flex our team member count within the location so that we're able to cover the expected throughput at any given time, depending on the expected traffic in the neighborhood.
Are all the orders that you that are received, are those done on, are all of them done on online, or do people come into the store and purchase right at the store for the first time?
It it's it's really a mix of of both. Over eighty percent of our customers purchase online ahead of time. For those that are perhaps new to us or are looking to to ask more questions, they're welcome to come into our locations, and that's where we have a series of team members dedicated to that assistance so that then we can process your your reserve your order, and then you would shift over to our point-of-sale system to be processed.
And how many customers, how do customers pay for their purchases? Is it cash or is it any other form of payment? Can you explain that to the board, please?
Sure, cash and debit cards are the only two forms that are accepted for payment. We do offer two ATMs located within the dispensary for for ease of, you know, customer convenience, if you will, for those that may be unfamiliar with that ahead of time.
I know that Jamal will be, Abe Jamal will be talking about security reasons, but can you explain a little bit about the how the loading and unloading will be taking place at this location?
Sure, sure. It's a it's a critical piece of how we operate. It is a it's a swift process that when our drivers and deliveries do show up, they take place at the back of the store. At no point in time would any customer see deliveries actually being loaded into into our dispensaries. It is in true partnership in that any delivery that's being intaked into our store, security, physical security is also present at the same time. I know able to dive into this, but there's of course cameras that are also that secondary aspect that's outside. The deliveries are very well calculated so that we don't overlap with multiple deliveries taken at the same time. We are very methodical in the pre-planning process so that the intake that's expected is all pre-planned. There's no surprises for the store scheduling at any given point. All of our stores are are notified ahead of time of the projected timeframe of when the deliveries will arrive. And we very much avoid what we consider predicted peak times. If there happens to be a a midday baseball game, as an example, we are shifting scheduled deliveries to be either early in the morning or not at all that particular day.
Did your company engage an expert to conduct a capacity and optimization analysis for this site?
We did. We actually worked with our partners at Integrated Insights.
And and did they prefer any recommendations that related to the operations?
They they did. In in fact, and you know, it it helped us further enhance. First of all, it helped us further solidify that we we have a solid process in place now when it comes to that customer journey. And then working with Susan and her team, it really allowed us to to further think through and and further solidify the the number of team members that need to be on site and what their positions are when we do face these peak times. For example, just before a baseball game, after a baseball game, peak traffic times within the city.
So the recommendations that they have made, we will be following those recommendations, is that correct?
Absolutely. In fact, it'll be, it'll further help us at some of our other locations as well.
I know we're only a half a block from Cubs Park. Is there any type of game day protocol that you have thought about and that you will be implementing at this site?
Yes, very much so. And that that falls in line very much with our peak optimal staffing levels. The fact that we will have twenty registers in our POS stations in our store. That is intended to to have, to to be able to get through the the sheer expected volume that's expected to come into the stores on those on that particular day. We also can go through a what we call a special events menu so that we're able to consolidate what's actually available to our customers coming in. This helps with the choice of what's available so that some of the assisted conversations where we're taking customers through for the very first time, perhaps. We're not necessarily having to review the entire menu. We're able to break it down in as simple a form as possible. Again, it helps with that throughput of the store.
What is the the mode of transportation that was that most people use with respect to thirty-eight twelve North Clark, the existing operation? Can you explain what most people got to that location?
Sure, most people are walking to our store, whether within the neighborhood or through the various forms of public transportation within the area. For those that do choose to drive, there are, you know, several parking garages that are all available, certainly falls in line in tandem with the the baseball stadium nearby. And so, but the majority is walk up to our store.
And you expect the same type of mode of transportation will be utilized here with thirty-five twenty-four?
Yes, absolutely.
I know I asked a question, Mr. Mr. Backtown, and I'll ask you the same questions with respect to the character of the surrounding properties. Will the proposed building and the way it's being operated fit in with the the character of the existing neighborhood in terms of hours of operation, character, the design of the building, et cetera, those types of things?
Very, very much so. In in fact, we 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 pride ourselves in that it will fit right in with our surrounding neighbors. In fact, in some ways with our shorter hours, us closing at ten P M. at night, you know, certainly allows us to, you know, fall within the neighborhood, within the overall, at our peak times will feel very, very similar. But as we do close at ten o'clock at night, will actually, you know, cause less congestion within the area as well.
And will this promote this way it's being operated? Will this promote public safety and welfare in this neighborhood the way it's going to be operated?
Very much so.
Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions of this goodness.
Thanks, Counselor. Any questions from the board for Mr. Butler, or else we'll we'll keep going?
I have a few. This is Jolene Salt. I'd like to get these up before I lose track. Can someone address the expected increase in employees and daily customers between the old and new location?
Sure, happy to do so. At our current location now, we have about fifty-five team members that are on staff at the at the current location. We are expecting to increase that to over seventy team members working in this particular store. Because the hours are very much the same as what we're operating, just as what we're operating in our current location, it does not change. It doesn't, it it doesn't necessarily change that aspect of this, but because of the increased amount of point-of-sale stations, it's why we are required, why we need to have the additional team members on site.
And then increase in daily customers, expected?
We would expect that. You know, what I will say, although it will feel, it will certainly increase. The building is is far larger in which it will feel less in 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 many ways feel less busy because you're able to absorb so many customers within the store versus our current footprint we operate right now.
Yeah, sorry. Do you have an estimate? I'm trying to get a sense of increased traffic, whether it's foot or car or whatever.
Sure, we could see upwards of close to two thousand customers on a particular day here.
Versus what at the?
Versus versus about, you could see upwards of about twelve hundred to thirteen hundred customers in our current location.
Okay, that's pretty significant. And then is there any distinction in terms of how the store operates or the customer experience for medical versus recreation?
Sure, the overall flow will feel very much the same. The overall assortment of product will will certainly feel the same. However, our medical patients will always have priority when it comes to entering our store. And with dedicated lines for medical patients and also dedicated consultation areas that are private in which our wellness advisors can can work directly with our 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 patients on a one-for-one basis.
Okay, and last one for now. If this were, if these special uses were approved, what's the timing of getting up and running in the new location and the timing of the the training center at the old location estimated?
With within a within a couple of months, you know, this store, you know, there's there's several, we want to make certain that as we're continuing to onboard our new team members that we have our additional team members in place so that as we begin to open up this great new location, we're able to deliver exactly what we're describing.
And is that the same for the training center a couple of months, or is that further out? The current location?
Sure, I will. I I Chima will be speaking on that in just a little bit as well. I would indicate to say it would be shortly thereafter. There are a series of other processes we need to go through to help as we sort of decommission the current store and prepare that current, that the current footprint for this particular training center.
Okay, I'll hold and see if that gets answered. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions from the board at this time? Okay, go ahead, Counselor.
My next witness would be Mr. Abe Jamal. Abe, can you hear me?
Can. Good afternoon, everybody.
Great. Could you please state your name and address, please?
Yes, Abraham Jamal, four hundred West Erie, here in Chicago.
And Mr. Jamal, you were previously sworn in this matter, is that correct?
Yes.
I mean, you're familiar with the parcel of property which is the subject matter of this hearing, namely thirty-five twenty-four North Clark?
Yes.
And are you familiar with the applications for the special uses that we submitted, which are part of this hearing today?
I am.
Do you have a security program in place for the location of thirty-eight twelve North Clark?
We do, yes.
Can you describe with that security program how it exists at that location?
Yeah, absolutely. It's it's built on several mitigating layers from our boots on the ground or 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 security officers. We also have an off-duty detail down to our physical security systems, our twenty-four hour monitoring, and then set forth plans for emergency management as well.
Have you, in a system, in the program that we, the security program that we have at thirty-eight twelve North Clark, have you experienced any issues with the way that that's operated, or has it gone well for the community as well as the store itself?
No, we we find it very successful. I do liaison with the nineteenth district, and I am a part of the Public Private Task Force, and if if anything, it's just been very contributing to the community. You know, we we haven't had any major incidents or or even minor incidents, so we we actually don't even put any services, tickets for service into the city because we're we're able to handle all our issues in-house.
The security systems and security protocol that you follow up at thirty-eight twelve North Clark, are you going to be following those same procedures and protocols with respect to the property of thirty-five twenty-four North Clark?
Yes, absolutely. And and like my colleague Brilliant said, being in a much bigger building, it'd even be slightly more robust as well.
Can you describe a a little bit with a more specificity, the security measures you propose implementing at this co-located medical and adult-use dispensary of thirty-five twenty-four?
Yes, so well, like everybody's mentioning, we will have twenty-four seven onsite guard services, our boots on the ground. I don't want to get into too much of the detail of how many, but it will be substantial for for mitigating mitigation, not only within the dispensary but around the neighborhood as well. Our systems are are very robust. Our cameras record roughly around thirty frames per second, and we have a high retention service which exceeds the state of Illinois. We've also gone through consultation with former DEA agents from Titan Group to make sure that we are exceeding what the state and the city requires for controlled substance and how we control our product from the moment it comes in until the moment it leaves.
Can you, everyone is concerned about this, and maybe can you just describe a little bit about how the loading and the unloading works at this at this location when cannabis is delivered to this to this particular location? How does that work and what what kind of precautions are there in security, is there to protect against any of that, any of that, anyone getting into that area?
Absolutely, John. And 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 again, just not to get too much into it, just. Absolutely, John, and again, just not to get too much into it, just for the safety of our dispensary. But we, like I said, we do contract also an off duty service as well. Will be on the outside and again, also provide mitigating services in the neighborhood. They are the ones who are the kind of the the key holders when we do get a delivery. The delivery van does come into the back, it is coordinated. We also additionally get a heads up as well for any counter surveillance and whatnot. Once the delivery does come up, our off duty services do stay with the delivery until everything is actually inside the building and the van has left.
In addition to the security officers, do you employ a series of cameras that are utilized or you give additional security to this operation?
Yes, absolutely, for this particular location, we'll have over eighty plus cameras. Some with some analytics that that serve purposes of the community into the police department. They're all strategically placed with a significant amount of overlap as well. Again, it exceeds what the state has put forth from regulation, regulations simply.
Is there a security slash alarm system that's utilized by you at this location as was as is present being used at thirty eight twelve?
Yes, absolutely, again, it just falls in line with our with our additional mitigating service of twenty four seven alarm services. So they are every door contact, every motion, every door reader is monitored twenty four seven.
I'll ask you similar questions that I've asked the other witnesses with respect to when viewing this proposed location here at thirty five twenty four. Through the lens of a security person, is the proposed use that we're going to be having here compatible with other uses in the neighborhood? In terms of the design of the building, the height of the building, the hours of operation, is it compatible with the other uses in the neighborhood?
A hundred percent, and as everybody has described, we've gone above and beyond with with a series of audits, I've gone through. Audits of crime prevention through environmental design, we've we've gone outside for counsel from former D agents, we've. We've gone through analytical surveys to make sure that we can get folks in and out. You know, my objective is 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 to make sure that our customers in the neighborhood can get in and out from from an emergency management standpoint. Again, we're truly here to be the example of a neighbor to support the police department, local services, and the neighborhood in itself.
Is the security system that we are putting into and following with respect to this property, will that be one that will enhance the pedestrian safety of the neighborhood?
Well, you know, it truly does. We're not just focused on the inside of our building, but because of regulations that have been put forth and we've been able to enhance slightly. You know, we can definitely see a substantial amount around the neighborhood as well. You know, from from pedestrian walkways to major streets and whatnot, and and again, we consistently liaison with the with the commander of the Nineteenth District. And, you know, we've done walkthroughs as well with him and he's been truly impressed.
I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman, of Mr. Jamal, thanks very much.
Any questions from the board for Mr. Jamal?
Yeah, I have a few questions, so. I know you've mentioned twenty four seven security. You didn't want to go, you know, too much into it, I get that. But does that mean you're going to have security guards there twenty four seven or is it twenty four seven because of the camera system you have in place?
Both, and I, and then thank you for the question. It'd be both, so we'd have twenty four hour camera coverage with a significant overlap and and significant retention. And then we'd also have on the boots twenty four seven inside the dispensary as well.
Very good, and could you just go a little deeper on, you said it would be security for the neighbor around the neighborhood? Could you go a little deeper on what that means?
Yeah, absolutely, so what we've seen statistically and as Charlie said as well. You know, we've deployed an off duty service. At thirty eight twelve and it's been significant mitigating effort from just having that off duty. Presence outside, you know, they're typically only outside for crowd control for that emergency response. And again, essentially, they are our first responders who are actually going to be on there, so in the event we did for some odd reason have a major event. We essentially already have that first responders on the on the ground, so this way they can liaise on with law enforcement, so for accurate information. It's all clear concise and for the best possible outcome.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board at this point for Mr. Jamal? Okay, let's keep going.
Thank you.
My next witness, Ty Duncan, please. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Great, thank you so much, yeah, would you please state your full name and address, please?
My name is Ty Duncan and we are at four hundred West Erie, Suite one ten, Chicago, Illinois six oh six five four.
And Ty, you remember you've previously been sworn in this matter, is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, are you familiar with the subject property which is a sub matter of this hearing, namely the property thirty five twenty four North Clark Street?
Yes, I am.
And are you familiar with the applications for special uses that have been filed with respect to a medical cannabis dispensary and also an adult use cannabis dispensary at this location?
Yes, I am.
And can you please describe to the board what role you play as Vice President of Community Integration for the company?
Sure. As Vice President of Community Integration, our team is responsible for making sure that Cresco is the best corporate citizen everywhere that we operate throughout the country. My colleague Chima will testify shortly and explain the difference between our community integration team and the seed team, so that's a social equity arm, but. Community integration is the corporate arm of Cresco civic engagement. So our efforts are throughout all the markets that we have in those ten states. And we like to be in line with the community's needs and making sure that what the. Individual areas throughout the country, whatever their needs are, as they align with our values and our resources, we're able to be supportive of those community organizations. The work that we do includes volunteering, in-kind donations, as well as. Corporate sponsorship and financial support of various community organizations initiatives and programming. And we also do things including in-store clothing drives, in-store fundraisers and that sort of a thing. To make sure that we are engaging with the community members on a variety of causes, including but not limited to. Food insecurity, homelessness, health initiatives, P P E distribution, veterans and senior citizen services.
So Cresco has both a commitment, not only on a national level, but also on a local level, on the local level are the some of the programs you've just identified, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I have no further questions of Mr. Chairman of Ms. Duncan.
Hey, okay, thanks, Ms. Duncan, any questions for Ms. Duncan at this time? Hey, let's keep rolling.
Okay, I'd like to call as my next witness, Mr. Chima Enya. Can you hear me, Chima?
Yes, good afternoon.
Can you please, you please state your full name and address?
Chomobi Enya, four hundred West Erie, Chicago, Illinois six zero six five four.
You've previously been sworn in this matter, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, are you familiar with the property at thirty five twenty four North Clark Street here in Chicago?
Yes.
And are you familiar with the applications for special uses that have been filed for both a medical cannabis dispensary as well as an adult use dispensary special use at that location?
Yes.
Can you please describe for the board your role in implementing the applicant's social equity and educational development programs?
Absolutely, so as my title, Executive Vice President of Social Equity and Educational Development. Our core value at Cresco is to really champion the development of pathways into the cannabis industry for individuals. And communities who've been left behind, primarily between the war on drugs, so. And it was mentioned by Todd that there's a nexus between our work, her community integration work. The seed work focuses more squarely on that nexus of. The war on drugs and its impacts on various communities and how we can look to restore communities, and so we do that in four ways. We have four pillars, entrepreneurship, and so that really is creating and supporting pathways to successful business ownership. Within the industry, and so we do that in a few ways that we'll get into later, workforce development, so making sure that we create. Support a diverse and inclusive pipeline for employment. With emphasis on BIPOC and returning citizens, so individuals from diverse communities and returning citizens who've been formerly justice involved. Education, so we create and support access to inclusive culturally sensitive training opportunities. Technical assistance opportunities for individuals and entrepreneurs seeking to thrive in the industry. And so we work with colleges and universities, as was mentioned a little earlier, as well as just doing community based workshops with organizations that connect with across the country and in this case in Chicago. One thing that is very near and dear to me is our restorative justice pillar. And so supporting a holistic approach to reversing the impact of the war on drugs on individuals that have been incarcerated. There are currently forty thousand individuals currently locked up federally for cannabis related convictions, and so part of our effort. Is to help restore those individuals and provide entry services as they re-enter into the community and help hopefully. Avail them to the pathways that we're creating for the community. And so it was mentioned earlier, programs around the colleges and universities, developing cannabis focused curricula. Working with local agencies and community organizations, we also sponsor expunging events. Which we can talk about a little bit or if there are any questions on those efforts as well.
I know you, we use the term seed and seed is an acronym for exactly what, what does that stand for?
Yes, so seed is social equity and educational development. And that is essentially my title, the Executive Vice President of Social Equity and Educational Development. My specific role was elevated into the executive leadership team. To come on board and sort of lead these efforts across the country, but Chicago, Illinois is the base and that's where we want to make sure that we're deeply ingrained in the community.
Does does Cresco have any programs that assist minority groups in filling out the applications for obtaining adult use cannabis dispensary license here in the city of Chicago?
Absolutely, and so Cresco from the very onset of the. Legalization effort in Illinois began to develop a dispensary incubator or incubator program. And so to date, we've supported over two hundred individuals and forty two businesses across Chicagoland. In the first phase of our dispensary incubator. We cover the application fees, for example, for fifty four dispensary applicants and eight craft grows. Most more recently, through the second phase, approximately twenty five percent of our dispensary incubator businesses were entered into the lottery. And so these are businesses that receive technical assistance from Cresco, we help them with their fees, we also supported craft grows through that process. During this long, you know, waiting period, we also helped support them in their efforts around. Responding to deficiency notices and helping them negotiate their legal fees to the tune of over a hundred thousand dollars. We've been able to save for those small companies that are looking to get into the industry, so. A lot of our efforts through our education pillar have been spent on developing this incubator. And we're looking forward to the second portion of that once the licenses are are fully released. Just to touch on what that incubator entails, if there are any questions on that, it's self-guided curriculum. It's a one-on-one support, we have workshops. We also provide, well, we will look to provide a hundred thousand dollars per incubator participant in non-dilutive capital. So that they can take that capital and leverage that into additional capital. In this in this industry, which will be very necessary. We're also looking at, you know, supply agreements and ways that we can provide, give the individuals that join our incubator. A leg up in the industry and a good head start.
I know Mr. Beckton talked earlier about certain programs we have with certain colleges. Can you just explain a little bit more about the colleges that we're working with and the programs that we have with those colleges?
Absolutely, and so one of the things that was mentioned was the Cannabis Education Center. This is a network and it will be a team effort that will be working very closely with colleges and universities, particularly in Chicago with. So mentioning Olive Harvey, we've worked with them for curriculum development. We've actually worked with Wilbur Wright, Chicago State, Roosevelt, Columbia. We've, you know, provided, we served as adjunct professors, conducted two courses on continuing education at Olive Harvey. We are looking forward to working with all of these universities in the training center, ideally in the first quarter of of next year. But the, you know, at the end of the day, what we really want to do is leverage our internal resources to create these pipelines and the educational universities that we have are diverse. And will continue to create talent that we can tap into and create a more professional and normalized cannabis industry in Illinois.
With respect to the property at thirty five twenty four, is it your intention then, company's intention to continue? To work with these community groups and through the seed program with the community and that we're now going to be moving into?
Absolutely, and it was mentioned a little bit earlier, that transition. We want to use that space as a marquee, first in the nation, best in its class training center. That leverages the assets that we have in the community, community groups, for example, if there are expunging events, you can't have social equity without socioeconomics, right? And so making sure that it isn't incubated for business and they can come and get hands-on training. Whether it be security check-in, front of house point of sale operations, back of the house vault operations, dispensary security or other. Services and education that the universities want to utilize that space for.
In connection with our social justice initiatives, I mean, do we as a company devote ourselves to attracting and working with minority organizations and more various different minority groups? In terms of hiring vendors for our company?
Absolutely, and so in my previous experience. Was heavily in the supply chain, D E N I space, and so coming to Cresco. What we begun the process of doing a top-down, middle-out and bottom-up approach to looking at our supply chain. Also looking at our hiring practices and leveraging organizations like your Chicago Urban League or Chicago United. Or the Chicago Minority Supply Development Council, building those relationships that can help us, you know, pipeline vendors into our supply chain. And even those vendors that aren't diverse in our supply chain, we want them to have skin in the game. And so one of the things that we did most recently was an initiative called Summer of Social Justice, where we called on all of our vendors to put money in the pot to help. Fund expungements across the country, we were able to serve over a thousand people, a lot of which were based here in Chicago. And that was in partnership with Project Hood and Social Change and Institute Odell Progressive Latino, so we work with. Not only our vendors to provide us services, but we make sure that that triples down into the community and they know that they need to align with our core values as well.
Thanks very much, I have no further questions, thanks so much for your testimony. Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions of this witness.
Thank you, Mr. Enya, so any questions from the board? Okay, go ahead, Counselor.
I'd like to call Mr. Lamar Johnson, Mr. Johnson, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you please state your phone number and address?
Lamar Johnson, thirty five East Wacker Drive, Chicago, Illinois six oh six oh one.
Mr. Jackson, are you familiar with the property at thirty five twenty four North Clark Street?
Yes, I am.
Are you familiar, Mr. Jackson, are you familiar with the special use applications that we have filed for the property of thirty five twenty four North Clark Street?
Yes, I am.
Can you please explain to the board how we view as an architect intent to remodel that existing space at thirty five twenty four North Clark Street?
Yes, we've we've remodeled it so that it works well as a. Retail establishment for cannabis sales and for medical and adult use. It works out, it actually works pretty well. I'm sorry, I sound like croaking the frog, I've got a, I've got a cold, so bear with me. But anyway, the the facility works pretty well, it allows us to. Enter and exit in different areas, which helps with the congestion and we've also managed to isolate the secure functions from the public functions.
So the area where the cannabis will be, will that be, will the space be designed in such a way that? No one will have have access to or be able to view the area where the cannabis is stored?
Correct, it's a it's a highly secure area.
Is that, is it true also that it will be designed in such a way that the operation will not be visible from the street or any public ways? Is that correct?
Correct, in accordance with the with the restrictions and requirements for for this kind of this kind of use.
And based on your experience as an architect and having been familiar with this project, this particular site. Is the proposed use compatible with the surrounding area in terms of height of buildings, building building codes, building scale, those types of ideas?
Yes, I believe it is, we're not affecting the exterior massing of the building at all.
And will, and will this be operated in complete compliance with the state of Illinois City and Chicago regulations?
Yes, I believe so.
I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman of this of this witness. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman of this, of this witness. Thanks, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay, Counselor, we have, I think there's one or two more.
Yes, there is. And I'll try to go quickly with them. Mr. Greg Nold is, is the next witness. Can you hear my, can you hear me, Mr. Nold?
Yes, I can.
Can you please state your full name and address?
Gregory Nold, and like Nancy, O L D as in David. I live at eleven forty-six Terrace Lane, Glenview, Illinois.
What is your business, your occupation?
I'm a certified general real estate appraiser. I have an MAI designation from the Appraisal Institute. I've been appraising real estate for eighteen years.
Before going any further, you were previously sworn in this matter, is that correct?
That is correct.
And you're familiar with the subject, special use applications that are pending before the board, is that correct?
That is correct.
And you're familiar with the surrounding properties that are, that surround the property at thirty-five twenty-four North Park, is that correct?
That is correct.
And can you, are you familiar with the manner in which the applicant is proposing to use the subject site?
Yes, I am. It's a proposed use for cannabis dispensary, medical and adult use. I feel like it fits well within the neighborhood. That's a very established and densely developed commercial node anchored by Wrigley Field, obviously, but also surrounded by three hotels and other very large-scale commercial development. The hours of use being from nine AM to ten PM fits well within that commercial environment. The hotels are obviously twenty-four-hour operations by nature. There's also a CVS pharmacy located about three hundred feet to the north of the subject with hours between seven AM and midnight. So between the scale and the use, I feel it fits well within that area.
Did you prepare a report of your findings and has that report been submitted to the board?
I did and it has.
Do you have an opinion as to whether the request for the special use is, is within the interest of a public convenience to have it at this location?
It is.
And are you, do you have any, based on your report, your examination of the site, based on your experience as an MAI appraiser, do you have an opinion as to whether or not this proposed use would create an adverse impact on the value of the properties in the surrounding neighborhood?
I've developed an analysis researching local, local sales data surrounding established dispensaries in Chicago. And there is no evidence of, of deterioration in market values or adverse effects on market values of surrounding real estate.
Would this co-located dispensary at this location be compatible with the other uses in the surrounding area?
It would be.
And it would be, your opinion is that it would be, it is being designed and operated to promote the public safety and comfort, is that correct?
As designed, yes, it would.
I have no further questions of this witness, Mr. Chairman.
And any, any questions from the board? Yeah, none. Counselor, do you have one more?
I, I really have, I really have, I really have two more.
Okay, and we'll, and we'll take, we'll take questions at the end. So maybe we just get through these two.
Okay. First, the witness that I would like to call now is Mr. Jack Tiedelman. Jack, can you hear me? Jack Tiedelman, can you hear me? Mr. Chairman, is he on mute, you know?
You know, I'm trying to find him, sorry. I don't see him on anymore. Unless he, he's under a different name potentially?
No, that's, 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 that's his, that's his name.
Looks like we lost him.
I can, I'll go on to.
He just joined back. He's, he's coming in now.
Oh, he's coming in now. Okay, great. Jack, can you hear me? Jack Tiedelman, can you hear me? Well, while I'm waiting for.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, Jack, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Great, thanks so much. Jack, can you please state your full name and address?
Jack Tiedelman, twenty-six Wilkeshire Boulevard, Randolph, New Jersey.
And Jack, you were previously sworn in in this proceeding, is that correct?
That is correct.
Can you please tell me what your business or occupation is?
I am the president and CEO of The Titan Group. We are a consulting firm, as I said before. We work shoulder-to-shoulder with leaders in business in the community to ensure safe and effective management of their controlled substance drug inventory. We consult across multiple industries. We provide supply chain management for pharmaceutical drug manufacturers, drug distributors, hospitals, pharmacies, addiction treatment programs, methadone, suboxone clinics, veterinary hospitals, and of course, the cannabis industry, all with the intent to prevent the illegal diversion of controlled substances, or more specifically opioids, from getting onto the street.
And Jack, are you familiar with the applications for special use that are on file and that are before the board today for the property of thirty-five twenty-four North Park?
I am.
And have you reviewed the security programs that are in place for thirty-five twenty-four North Park?
I have.
Did you previously review and are you familiar with the security provisions that were in effect for thirty-eight twelve North Park?
Yes, I have.
Okay. Well, the provisions, the security provisions that are being used now at thirty-eight twelve, are those the type of security provisions that are going to be instituted and followed with respect to thirty-five twenty-four?
Yes, they will.
Based on your experience with respect to reviewing security programs, is the security program that we have in effect now, will that be in compliance with the regulations of the state of Illinois and the city of Chicago?
It does.
Can you describe to the board the security measures, what we would be implementing at this co-located medical and adult use dispensary?
So, well, it was, you know, it was described, the security aspects, the full security aspects, where I think were described in great detail earlier. But for the, you know, for the, the facility itself, the transactional security for the selling and the, the distribution of the cannabis products, you know, Cresco combines video security technology at the, the highest levels along with the physical security, which is the implementation of the security guards, which provides that advanced asset protection. There, also the use of access control to help ensure that only the authorized personnel have access to the back rooms and the employee entrances and, which keeps the patrons on the right side of the counter.
And you, you've looked at the provisions for security cameras that are going to be utilized at this location, and do those meet or exceed the requirements for security cameras?
They do. You know, the, the location's using a combination of high-definition IR cameras, all within the realm of two megapixels or four megapixels, you know, which is, you know, which is, it gives us the ability to actually read a license plate if need be. They're utilizing state-of-the-art electronic security, you know, the electronic security system uses a integrated intrusion alarm system, which is tied into the CCTV, the video system. So, you know, they've, they've been using a, a state-of-the-art March, it's called March Key Card Technology, and, which is, you know, in the industry, it's state-of-the-art. So this is a whole connected system of surveillance, you know, between video surveillance, human, you know, human surveillance. You know, their, their anomalous detection software that's incorporated within the electronic security system. All of that combined with, you know, with the, you know, the boots on the ground is probably provides some of the best security on that block, if not the best security on the block.
Can you please tell me, what do the initials DEA stand for?
So I, that DEA is the Drug Enforcement Administration. I guess I should have finished that part of it. I was a DEA special agent for twenty-six years. The DEA is America's resident force when, when it comes to the legal drug trade. So when I was, as a DEA special agent, it was our duty to, you know, to pursue the most notorious drug traffickers, terrorist organizations, you know, that threaten our communities and our cities. So, you know, that was all done by gathering evidence to prosecute major drug crimes, you know, partnering with our, our local partners, like, you know, Chicago Police Department, Illinois State Police, you know, and then, and then working those, you know, those cases, arresting subjects, seizing assets, all connected to that illicit drug trade. And then, you know, and, and what we're doing here is tied to the rest of the world. So, you know, it was also working with, you know, foreign countries to share that intelligence and target those, those international criminal organizations.
Do the security provisions that we're using here meet or exceed the requirements of DEA with respect to security provisions to guard against any type of problems at a particular location?
They do. You know, I ran the, the security for the New York Field Division, as well as the Atlanta Field Division. And the security that's, that's in place here is as good as the security that we were using to, to house and protect the, the multiple controlled substances that we seize. And, you know, Cresco is doing a very good job at, at managing the one controlled substance that they're selling.
Thanks very much, Mr. Tiedelman. I have no further questions of you, but I appreciate your testimony.
You're welcome.
And one more witness, Mr. Chairman.
Right ahead with, with the witness.
I would like to call Susan Decker, please. Susan, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you please state your full name and address?
Sure. Susan Decker. I'm the Vice President at Integrated Insight with members of two four six five McLean Lane, The Villages, Florida.
And you previously were sworn in in this matter, is that correct?
Yes.
Can you please tell a little bit about what you do and what type of clients you typically serve and what, what's the nature of your business?
Sure, yeah. So we are an analytics consulting company. I said earlier, reformed by former Disney executives. And so we have worked a lot in the travel and leisure, but also support government, healthcare, transportation. Some past clients include Universal Studios, Universal Parks and Resorts, SeaWorld, Cedar Fair. And actually, just last year, the Chicago Cubs, where we actually did something relatively similar to this project, where we were simulating their ingress progress, ingress process to help optimize given COVID and new technology.
And you're familiar with both of these applications, the applications that are before the board today for the medical cannabis dispensary license and special use, as well as the adult use, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And can you describe to the board what it is that you did with respect to looking at this location and giving your analysis of it?
Sure, yeah. So we performed a capacity analysis where we were attempting to understand the throughput under different demand scenarios. So to do this, we used an agent-based simulation, which is an advanced technique that we've used for other clients, including Wynd Hotel, the Chicago Cubs, Meow Wolf, among some others. And there's actually some screenshots I saw in here as well from the simulation as well. What it is, is we use AnyLogic, a software where we create artificially intelligent agents who kind of act like little humans moving through the process flow like real customers would. And in order to develop this, we had to develop a robust set of assumptions, which was developed based on site visits, visits with subject matter experts, collecting in-person data, watching security footage to get transaction time data, using transaction data from existing sites, as well as working with the operational team to develop that assumptions.
I have no further questions of this witness, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Counselor, thank you. And just to confirm, was that your, that was the final witness, right?
That's my final witness, Mr. Chairman, yes.
Thank you. So I want to open up questions, the board, for, for anyone who's spoken with us today on any topics that you want clarification on or that we haven't heard in your eyes enough. This is for the board. So just to confirm, so no additional questions from the board? So we have everything we need, Counselor.
I would just like to indicate in my conclusion that I think that we have met all of the standards required from the ZVA in order to entitle us for these special uses at this location. And I would ask for a favorable recommendation on this matter as the app of my client.
Great. Thank you very much, everyone, for your time and going in depth on all of this, on this call, and also in the affidavit or the findings of fact leading into this. So we'll take this under consideration.
Thanks so much.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all.
We're going to move to a recess. So let's call this lunch. We will reconvene at one forty-five PM Central Standard Time, so that gives around forty minutes. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Vito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toy?
Yes.
Great, thanks, everyone. We'll be back at one forty-five.